Okay, if we have a few council members, we can start this show. Mr. Bokey? Get on with the show, so to speak. Apparently. Did I take an extra spot? Let me move that over. Got it. Very good. Exactly. Let's see, we've got Mary, Mary's out. Just the mayor. You're there, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for Monday, June 10, 2019. We have several items for discussion tonight, and the first is the West Pierce Fire and Rescue Update. For this, we have Chief Sharp. If you'd like.
There's a leg right here, in case anyone's wondering, so. No, I'm fine.
Hit your shin on it, we'll call the paramedics. All right.
All right. Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of the council, I appreciate you having me here this evening. Have a short presentation I'd like to walk through, just to talk a little bit about some of the challenges that the fire service is currently seeing, and some of our programs that we're looking to put in place to help work on that and keep our service delivery effective, and how we anticipate funding that for 2020 and beyond. As you know, West Pierce Fire and Rescue provides service to University Place and Lakewood inside the fire district, but we also provide service to the town of Stillcombe through contract, and the American Lake VA through a contract. We have six stations and 31 firefighters on duty at any given day. And we ran just over 16,000 calls for service last year, which is the most calls we've ever run for service. And we'll talk quite a bit this evening about what's driving that call volume. We're a full-service fire department. We provide emergency medical services, fire protection, emergency medical transport. We also have a lot of unique things that we need to protect because of the urban environment that we're in. So we do have a marine unit with a boat on the water on Narrows Marina. We have boats on the lakes as well, with a dive team and a water rescue team, swim team. We also have a hazardous materials team, and our technical rescue team is comprised of technical skills such as high rescue, high angle rescue, confined space rescue, heavy machinery such as the accident with the train. It's a very unique type of disentanglement when you have to pull apart heavy machinery like that. So we have folks that are all specially trained in those types of things. Public education is a big part of what we do as well. We're in every grade level of every school in the district and provide different training at those different grade levels. And we also do adult education. The cornerstone of that is our community emergency response teams. And certain team members, we've now trained over 600 certain team members within the community. And they're trained to mobilize in a major disaster to be able to help in their local neighborhoods when the fire service is limited on our resources and our ability to cover for a mass disaster. So we have over 600 citizens that we've now trained in that program. So as you can see, since 2011, and 2012 was the year that we merged in March. And so going back to 2011, the year prior to merge, we've had a 28% increase in our call volume. A couple of years, it dipped a little bit, but generally speaking, it's been a pretty steady trend line going up. And we anticipate that to continue for the foreseeable future for a few reasons we'll talk about here. West Pierce Fire and Rescue has a really high demand for service. We were pretty surprised when we ran the numbers. We have a higher demand for service per capita than any fire district in Pierce County. I'm not sure what that is. It seems to be, it almost seemed like an anomaly to us because it was so high compared to our closest neighbor, which was Central Pierce, but they still were quite a bit lower than us on a per capita basis. 100 out of every 1,000 people, there's 163 calls for service. So, you know, try to put those into numbers that people can relate to. In a room of about 30 people, that means five people would need to call 911 for service in any given year. So there's several things that drives our call volume. One, I've already mentioned, urban fire district. We are the most urbanized fire district in Pierce County. Fire districts like Central Pierce and East Pierce have urbanized corridors and urbanized areas, but they also have large swaths of rural land that they protect as well. We have no rural land, with the exception of the golf course in UP and Fort Stillcombe Park. So very, highly densely populated with about 100,000 people in a 31-square-mile area. Being urbanized like we are, like I said, requires a lot of special rescue and different types of equipment because we respond to a lot of unique properties such as Western State Hospital, or marinas, or hazardous materials facilities, industrial facilities, things like that. But when I talk about the 28% increase, only some of that has been population-driven. A big part of that is driven in the emergency medical sector. And the biggest growth sector we see is in what we call low-acuity emergency medicine, which is kind of a, you know, it's a misnomer because it's not emergency medicine. It's really kind of primary care medicine for low-acuity calls and people that have chronic illnesses or, you know, they've maybe had a cold for a few days and they're sick and they want to be seen, and so they want to go to the ER, whatever the reasons, we see an increasing demand in that. We're not unique. That's something that's universal to the fire service in the US right now. And there's some reasons for that. One, with Obamacare, there's a lot more people that have access to healthcare, which is a good thing, but it also means that more people want to go be seen when they have a problem and when they're medically ill. More people than previously had wanted, so it's creating a higher demand for service. Compounding that problem is we're on the leading edge of a shortage of doctors. And there's been a lot of studies on this recently, and the most recent one, a couple of years ago, is estimating that there will be a doctor shortage in 2030 of 100,000 physicians. So it's not an insignificant number. And at that same time, they also did a study of 15 major metropolitan markets in 2017 and found that the average wait time now for a physician was 28 days, or 24 days, I'm sorry. Likely to be 28 days now. That was two years ago. So if you've tried to reach your doctor recently and schedule an appointment for some type of routine that's not emergent care, you'll find that two and a half to three weeks is not unusual at all. So people with a non-urgent condition want to be seen. They can't be seen by their doctor or any doctor in short order, so what they've turned to quite often is 911 as a means of someone who still does house calls. So we go out, we see them, and by state law, we're kind of restricted on what we're able to do, and ER is where we have to take them. So that creates a compounding effect because ERs are getting overloaded. And if you think waiting for your doctor takes a long time, try going to the emergency room for care. That's really a struggle, and so it's putting a burden on the entire healthcare system. It's a continuum, and the whole healthcare system is challenged right now with a lot of that. Another thing that compounds it is our aging population. And certainly, aging population is a nationwide trend, which is great. People are living longer, but the longer you live, you're more likely to have some kind of a chronic health illness, which requires you to be seen by a physician more frequently. And again, many people are turning to the fire department as that primary care provider. One of the things that's a little bit unique to us is this is a great retirement community, especially being close to the base. People like my father, their last station is Fort Lewis, or JBLM as it is now. And they like where it is, they like the country, and they stay here. And then they realize they want to stay close to services such as the PX and the commissary and Madigan, and so they don't move very far. As you know, Lakewood has a very high population of retirees from the military, which is great, and it's nice to be able to support that community. But some of the statistics now show that 10% of the homes in Lakewood, in the city of Lakewood now, are occupied by a single resident over the age of 65. So there's a lot of older people in the community that are living by themselves and don't have maybe family or resources close by. Again, 911 becomes a good assistance to them when they need it. And the last three things that are on that list, I'm going to kind of lump them together because they tend to travel together a little bit, and that's things such as poverty and homelessness, and substance abuse, and mental health disorders. We see all of that. Oftentimes, we see that combined in ones, twos, and sometimes three different challenges that someone's facing. And although there's a lot of resources out there for folks that are having different issues such as this, they don't know how to access them easily, but they do know how to access 911, so they will call us. And so much like, I'm sure you've heard from Chief Zaro and the police department going out and managing more patients or people with mental health issues, we're seeing the same thing. And just like them, their solution a lot of times is they end up taking them to jail, which is not where they want to take them, nor is it where they need to be, but it's kind of their only resolution. Same thing for us. The emergency room becomes a resolution. It's not the place for their care, but then it creates a cycle where they get kicked out of the ER, and two days later, they're in crisis and call us back. And it creates this loop that we're, we want to try and break.
Got a question for you before.
You bet.
Because I know we're going to talk about the levy opportunities down the road. My question to you, on the medical services that you've described, the increased access you're providing, the increase due to Obamacare and otherwise, my question is, the fire services, what are they doing as an industry to perhaps lobby to allow certain coding for services that might be covered by people who do have insurance to recoup some of those expenditures?
That's actually a great question, and there is a lot of that going on right now. And there's definitely a lot of education and coalition building that's happening with legislators at state and the federal level to try and understand first responders as a piece of the healthcare industry. You know, for, you know, for many, many years, they were seen as kind of this, you know, adjunct that was over here that provided emergency medical care. And now they're starting to recognize, Centers for Medicare Services specifically, are starting to recognize the fire service is a piece of the healthcare industry. And what we do actually drives the majority of health dollars. Because if we take someone, if we go see someone who's called 911, they're likely to end up in the ER. If they're in the ER, they're much more likely to end up with some kind of a hospital stay. So it compounds a lot of healthcare dollars. So we have been working at a state level a few years ago to lobby some changes that allow us to recoup some additional dollars through the Medicaid system in a program called Ground Emergency Medical Transport, or GEMT. At the state level, we're working, again, trying to do a lot of education and coalition building so that we can start to work towards some changes in state law that right now restricts us with very, very few exceptions. Our only terminal destination with a patient that we've seen is the ER, even though that may not be what they need, or we could take them to the urgent care right down the street, or we could take them to their doctor's office right down the street. We don't have that option without changing some state laws, and so those are some things we're working on.
Because if my hide got hauled to the ER by AMR, they would charge me.
Correct.
So we can't do or look to do something like that under state law, make a tweak to that?
Well, we do, the fire department does have a billing program, and we do charge for medical transports. However, if you live within the fire district, we send a bill for that. And I should say that we have, we have two different billing invoices, one for basic life support, one for advanced life support. They're different figures based on, again, Medicaid and Medicare allowable expenditures. And you will receive that bill. If you have insurance, your insurance provider is billed as well. And then any residual that is required of you, cash out-of-pocket expenditures, if you are a citizen of the fire district, you're not required to pay that. And there's a checkbox on the form that allows you to defer from paying any out-of-pocket expenditures as a citizen because you've already paid your taxes. And so that's something that our board has adopted in a policy they've had probably for 20 years now.
Sorry about that, but.
No, not at all. So what are we doing about this rapid rise in medical care requirements? And I describe it as trying to reimagine fire-based medical services. And for many, many years, we've always talked about EMS or emergency medical service. And the reality is, the E is quickly, you know, fading from that. And it's really all medical services, whether they're emergent or non-emergent. We are kind of the front line of the healthcare industry at the local level. So we've had to kind of reanalyze response models and methods of doing business that have been in place for 60-plus years or longer, but they were built around emergencies. They were built around responding to a fire call. They were built around responding to a cardiac arrest, emergent medical care. So we're reinventing that and trying to evaluate what's the best way to keep ourselves prepared for the emergencies, but manage this increasing body of work that we have in non-emergent care. One of the things that we've implemented is a new response plan that is a BLS, Basic Life Support Response Plan. For basic life support calls, we would send a fire engine and a medic unit. And that was intended because the fire engines, we have one in every station, but we don't have a medic unit in every station. So for example, if you called 911 in Stillcombe, we send the fire engine from that station, but you might not, the medic unit may be coming from Lake City or out on Pacific Highway. So we send the fire engine first, and then we send the medic unit in on every call. What we realized was our medic units were getting drawn down on a lot of low-acuity calls, and we wanted to keep them available. So we've changed that to allow for now just the fire engine goes. And the first thing they do is evaluate, does it, do they need a medic unit with paramedics and advanced life support equipment? And if they don't, are there other alternatives to get them to some kind of care? Can they drive themselves? Can a friend or a relative drive them? We have a separate 501(c)(3) funded by our employees that buys taxi vouchers that we can send someone in a taxi and pay the bill for that.
How do you make that evaluation? Is it over the phone through dispatch?
No, the fire engine would go there, and the crews on the fire engine are medically trained as EMTs, and they would go ahead and do an assessment and determine if there's some other mechanism to get them to hospital. And if all else fails, then they will call for the medic unit and take them. So it keeps the medic unit's availability higher by not sending them on every single call and waiting to determine if there's a different method to transport the person to the hospital. That's already been implemented, and it's been in place for long enough now that we're looking to go ahead and do some six-month evaluations prior to and after. Anecdotally, it's been very successful at keeping our medic unit availability higher, but we want to get some actual numbers to define what that utilization looks like. On July 1st, we're going to start a BLS transport program. So again, basic life support, transport. All of our medic units now currently are advanced life support units set up for advanced care with a paramedic. And what we want to establish, our pilot, is a BLS program where, again, the fire engine goes first, evaluate if there's any way to send them to the hospital or to urgent care, or some other means of getting them to care. And if not, then they would call the basic life support unit in. They'd come in, pick up the patient, take them to the hospital, and come back. So their sole work would be to navigate and transport low-acuity patients and try, again, to keep utilization of our medic units for the purpose they're designed for, high critical care and not necessarily always committed to these low-acuity patients. Sprint cars are something that we have not got a timeline yet to implement, but another pilot program we want to implement that, again, we send fire engines to everything, a model that is very old, based on emergencies. And the concept was, send the fire engine. They have all the equipment. They have their gear. They're ready to go. So as soon as they're done with your aid call, if there's a fire, they can break away and go straight to the fire. They don't have to go back to the fire station and get their equipment. It's with them. The problem is, when they're getting committed to so many low-acuity calls, their availability decreases. And so what we want to implement as a pilot program is what we're calling a sprint car. And it's a small vehicle. I like to call it a fire engine without ladders and hose. It would have two personnel rather than three. It'd be a vehicle, maybe like an SUV, that would carry all the same basic life support equipment of a fire engine. And they might have one ladder, maybe a small collapsible ladder. So if they go into someone's home and they have a problem with a smoke detector, they can get to that. They can go to area investigations. A lot of people call us, they see smoke, but they don't know if there's a fire. And so they can go out and investigate those types of things without committing a fire engine. So they can go to some basic fire-type responses, non-emergent fire responses, and then non-emergent medical responses, trying to keep our fire engines in place. And the area we've targeted for that pilot program is the same location that we currently have our ladder company. Our ladder company is our largest vehicle, gets about two to three miles to the gallon, and it takes a lot of wear and tear. It's also our busiest vehicle because it's right in the urban core, sitting right over off Silicon Boulevard because we want it close to the industrial areas and the areas that we believe it would be most likely used. So that makes it very busy, and that's not the best vehicle to have busy because it's the only ladder company we have, so we don't like to get it committed too much, and it's very expensive to operate. And the last one is what we've called Connected Care. And this is a program where we have a lot of people that we've defined as high utilizers. They call 911 over and over again. And again, I'll use the example of someone who has a mental health issue. They get into crisis. They don't know any other resource, so they call 911. We get there, and again, as I said, by state law, we really only have one destination for them, and that's the emergency room, and that's not going to get them the care they need. That's not a location for mental health resources. So we partnered with Northwest Physicians Network and did a pilot program that when our folks went out and met someone who was calling over and over again, who needed assistance, needed some care, but it wasn't emergency care, and it certainly wasn't an ER, they would notify our EMS chief, and our EMS chief would go out with someone from Northwest Physicians Network, meet with the person, kind of find out what their situation was, what were their challenges, what was causing them to call 911, and then get them connected through the network of resources that are available within Pierce County. And it takes some time, and it takes a little bit of work, but once they had those interventions and they met with people, the 911 calls from those people almost all but ended. They, you know, clearly still had some emergency needs now and then, but generally speaking, they now had a resource, and they were working directly with the right resources to get the right kind of care. And it was very successful for us through the pilot program. So much so that last month, Qualus Health, who's now been renamed as CoImagine Health, evaluated the program that we had done, and we received their innovation award for the pilot program that we did. And they evaluated what we had done, and what they determined is for those patients that we were able to meet with and work with, there was no less than a 40% reduction in their repeat 911 calls, transports, and ER visits. So it had a very significant impact to every person that we were able to have an interaction with. And they estimated that the total healthcare savings on that pilot program were over $1 million. And at the end of the day, most importantly, it was increasing public health because we were getting people to the right resources for their problems and challenges. So obviously, running programs like this in the fire department requires us to go to the voters and reauthorize funding on a regular basis. And the fire districts in Washington State have access to three taxing measures. They have access to a regular levy, an EMS levy, and then what we call our maintenance and operation levy, which is defined as an excess levy because it's outside of the scope of the regular and EMS. These are three levies that we have had for many years. I think the shortest one is our MNO levy, and we've had that for over 40 years. It's been approved by the voters on a regular basis. And the last time they approved that was in 2015. So it is, it's at the end of its four-year lifecycle, and it's time to put that back on the ballot this year. Kind of unique for us is it will also be on the ballot with a lid lift for our regular levy and our EMS levy. So it's kind of a, it's a comprehensive funding package that we've put together that will place three ballot initiatives out there for the public. The MNO levy, as I said, is a four-year levy, and that levy supports approximately 30% of our operating budget on an annual basis. The regular levy will fund approximately 40% of our operating budget, and the EMS levy about 15%. So collectively, these three ballot measures support approximately 85% of our total operating budget on an annual basis. The remaining 15% comes primarily from two sources. One is contracts for services. Like I said, we have a contract with Stillcombe, American Lake VA. Other non-traditional taxing entities such as Western State Hospital, we have a contract with Pierce County for the golf course, things like that. And then another big chunk of that remaining 15% comes from the ambulance transport billing that I mentioned. That is a, that's a fairly significant revenue stream that we bill for as well. So those are the two main things that make up the remaining 15%, but 85% of our funding comes directly from tax dollars in these three propositions that will be on the ballot August 6th. So what that means for a taxpayer from a rate perspective is, in 2016, again, the last time that voters were asked to approve the MNO levy, the owner of a $300,000 home paid about $1,000 in taxes to the fire district in 2016. With the approval of propositions one, two, and three, the owner of a $300,000 home will pay about $961, or about a 4% reduction in the actual rate. The method in which the rate is less, you know, four years later, has a lot to do with the way the cities of University Place and Lakewood have developed over those last four years. Obviously, the entire value, assessed value of the district is more than it was. A significant part of that has to do with the cities and their efforts at the economic development that's gone on. And I know we just got a state of the city address at our board meeting from the city manager, and, you know, he went through the litany of new businesses and the growth that's going on with multifamily housing and everything else in our city, here in Lakewood, and in the city of University Place. You drive through the Bridgeport corridor, and you can see all the work that they've done to improve town center. So there's been a lot of good economic growth in both communities, which has helped us be able to fund all these programs and the growth that we have right now with a lower rate than we had four years ago. So as we move forward, the question is, what are we going to do with those tax dollars? And what is our plan for 2020 and in the next four years? And quite simply, there's three key goals that we have. And the first and foremost is just continue to provide quality service that the community expects. I think that our community expects and deserves high-quality service from the fire department. And so we want to continue to do that, and we want to be able to fund it appropriately. I think we've done a great job, and we want to continue. We don't want to slip in that we are one of the only Class III cities rated by the Fire Protection Bureau, the Washington State Rating Bureau, and fire protection class rating of three, along with City of Tacoma and Central Pierce Fire and Rescue. We're the only three in Pierce County. So we feel pretty proud of that, and we don't want to see ourselves slip from that. We want to continue to provide that level of service. To do that and to manage the call volume that has increased and the call volume that we anticipate to continue to increase in the EMS sector, we have a plan over four years to put five more firefighters on per day, and they will be used for primarily medical services work. So the sprint cars and the BLS cars that I talked about, it's not to put on another fire engine, it's to put on medical services resources. And the last position that we're excited about trying to implement in the next four years after this passes would be the Connected Care position full-time. We did it as a pilot program, and it was just an extra duty assigned to our EMS chief. And he just barely scratched the surface of the patients that we had identified who could benefit from the service, but he just didn't have the time, obviously, to do that full-time as a pilot program. So we want to implement that program full-time moving forward. I will note that these additional positions that you see here represent the first increase in staffing that we've had since 2008. So all of our hiring that we've done up to this point has only been to replace those people who have retired. So this will be the first additional firefighters that have been put on in a decade. And so we're pretty proud of our ability to manage the workload that we've had over the last 10 years. But we realize, although we're doing that pretty well right now, it's getting to be very difficult and over the next four years with projected growth, that's not going to be sustainable. And it's time for us to go ahead and start looking at some increased resources. I know that's a lot, and I know you've got a lot of business today, so I appreciate you taking the time to hear all that. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions? Maybe I'll throw it out there real quick before Mr. Simpson jumps in. Just looking at Chief, at the existing tax levy rate that we have currently, so there's a, in addition to the MNO, there's a bond out there. It's, what, 18 cents per thousand?
Yeah, that's a very good question. There is a bond in the city of Lakewood. That was voter-approved by the city of Lakewood back in 2000, I think it was 2001. Built the station on Pacific Highway and did improvements to several other stations. At the time of the merger, that bond, because it was voter-approved in the city of Lakewood, that remained with the city of Lakewood, so that is only in the city of Lakewood. And it will expire in 2021. So that is only in the city of Lakewood and it will, it'll expire in twenty twenty-one. It'll be, it'll sunset in another year, about two years.
So between the M and O, that's currently ninety-seven cents and then the, it's called West Pierce expense. That's probably the, one of the other maintenance and operations. It's a buck thirty-two roughly. So these are all going to go down by four percent collectively?
No, the, the, no, the four percent decrease is, is the rate compared to what it was in twenty sixteen, last time they were authorized. So last time it was authorized in twenty sixteen, is, we're trying to, we, you know, trying to show an apples to apples. Last time the voters approved a levy rate was in, uh, increase was in twenty sixteen. And at that time, the levy rate was, I'm sorry, I have that right here. I don't have it. Wait for it. Levy rate was three thirty-three in twenty sixteen. The levy rate will be three twenty going into next year. That does not include the bond. That is separate and outside of those, those three levy initiatives.
Okay. Got it. Mr. Simpson, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the report, chief. I appreciate this. My question is based on concern for the fire department, for you and for the men and women who work for you. Because one of the things I'm hearing here tonight is you folks face a growing tsunami of work. And my question is, on your three propositions here, are you allowed to adjust the rate for which you ask?
No, under, under an excess levy model, which, which is what we're asking for is an excess levy, our M and O levy, the, the levy rate is, in fact, it's not even a rate, it's a dollar amount we ask for in our excess levy. And that dollar amount will be the same all four years. It's a consistent dollar amount. There are other mechanisms that other fire districts utilize, such as Central Pierce, which is a fire benefit charge. And it allows adjustments, but not an excess levy. It'll be a fixed dollar amount for our levy, uh, excess levy for the next four years.
Okay, because my concern is when I see a twenty-eight percent increase in call for services and I wonder what that's going to be like in four years. Are you going to have the means to do what you have to do? And that's, that's what's starting, it's not you or the fire department. That's what's bothering me. Is because if you, you stop and think, you may be, I actually wrote a note to myself, the changing face of medical care wears a fireman's uniform. Do you have the means? Do, and, and if you don't, what can we do to help you get the means to do what you need to do? Given the statistics that you presented. And then you answered my question the way I thought you would. No, I can't charge you what I think you ought to be paying for this service. I'm set by law to certain standards. What can we do? And I don't mean just as a council, but as a city to help you. Because it, from where I'm sitting, you're in a no-win situation.
Well, I think, I guess, there's a couple of pieces to answer there, I think, is what I heard, is a couple of questions. And I would say, first of all, yes, I think we're capable of, of handling. We've, we've done a lot of projections and tried to determine what do we, what do we see on the horizon? And, and, and we feel like what we've put together for our hiring plan and the, and the, and the programs that we want to implement will help us manage that over the next four years effectively. And, and with that said, some pieces of this also involve, as we touched on a little bit earlier, some legislative changes that will give us better opportunities to maybe do some different things over the next few years than we can today, which will also help some. I would say from the city's perspective, things that could be beneficial to us. I think the city is already doing those, those things. One, I think that I would really highly compliment the, the, the medical health program that you have with your police department, the joint program that you have with an embedded medical health professional. I know that when we went through our pilot program, our EMS chief worked very closely with the officer and the medical health professional in, in the fire depart, or in the police department. And they had very good collaboration. We're, we're seeing the same people. We're, we're, we're visiting the same people and so working together there has been really good. And the other thing I would say that the cities are doing really well is, is the economic development. At the end of the day, economic development, because the fire service is, is limited. We only have one option for tax and that is a property tax. And so if, if there's good, strong economic development, especially in the, the commercial growth and, and sectors, it helps to keep that, those, the, the total revenues where they need to be to support services without burdening it heavily on, on the homeowners. And so I think the, the city is doing a good job of really trying to pursue a strong economic development. And for us as a fire district who's solely based on assessed values and property taxes, I think that's, that's really the best thing that we can hope for is a strong, vibrant community.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can do in the legislative agenda front where we can help push an agenda that might help recoup some of those costs of now healthcare as opposed to emergency services, let us know.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And we will, like I say, we're, we're really in a, in the coalition in education business right now because it's really kind of a new concept, trying to understand where the fire service fits in the, in the spectrum of healthcare. But if, if we get to a point where we have legislation that we think is beneficial for the community, we'll definitely come back and share that with you.
Great. Any other questions, folks? The chief? We appreciate all you do and all your team does for the community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So one of the things we'll discuss briefly here perhaps at the next meeting is whether or not we want to propose a resolution by the council to support the fire district in this levy endeavor. That may be something that we want to discuss either now or at a regular city council session. But I know that's an issue that we have done before and it's something that I'm sure would be appreciated by the West Pierce folks, so. Can chat about it now if you'd like. Get a consensus and we can direct the manager to do that. You guys good for that? So you got consensus there, Mr. Manager. Let's go ahead and support the district. You got a resolution coming your way? Welcome. Okay, next we have a joint planning commission meeting with our friends with the planning commissions. So come on down, gentlemen and ladies. One, two, three, four, five gentlemen. So I think we've got enough chairs. We've got Mr. Daniels, who's going to lead us through our work plan discussion tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, City Council. I'm Don Daniels, Chair of the Planning Commission again, again this year. So, and then the other individuals can introduce themselves if they wish.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. So just to recap, it looks like we held a lot of public hearings. We made a lot of recommendations and we have a lot left on our plate to do. So that kind of sums it up. We're done.
Time for coffee.
How about that? No. I can recap some of the two thousand and eighteen accomplishments and go over. And if you have any questions, you can ask, but you've already deliberated and made decisions on these things. But we'll go through some of these things. A, we conducted a public hearing and made recommendation to city council on the Starlight Drive-In Development Code amendments. We conducted a public hearing and made recommendations to city council on adult family home businesses and essential service facilities. We also conducted another public hearing. We were very busy in two thousand and eighteen on public hearings and made recommendations regarding the marijuana production, processing and retail sales. We did receive the two thousand and seventeen annual housing report and looked at that. We reviewed the downtown sub-area plan, the DEIS, Department of Ecology. We conducted a public hearing and made recommendation to city council on the proposed revision of the sign code, which I think you deliberated and made some changes to what we submitted our recommendations. We had a joint meeting with the city council like we're doing today. We conducted a public hearing and made recommendation to city council on the downtown sub-area plan, the policy document and the development regulations, plan action ordinance and related comprehensive plan amendments. And we conducted a public hearing and made recommendation to city council on the motor vehicle sales regulations. Okay, so continuing on.
You did all that in one meeting last year?
Yeah, man, these were, these were great. We, we reviewed and made recommendation to city council regarding the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan docket. So those were some of our accomplishments in the two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand and nineteen has been as eventful to date. The most important one was the election of new officers. And they voted myself in again as chair. Ms. Con, Connie Coleman-Lackady was the vice chair this year. We also received the two thousand and eighteen housing report and we reviewed. And that was completed in the early January of two thousand and nineteen. We had a quasi-judicial site-specific rezone municipal code amendment due to a property that was presented to us. And so we had education and information regarding that. The Shoreline Master Plan Update, including Restoration Plan, we've completed that and give our recommendations. That was in March of two thousand and nineteen. And I can say for myself, that Restoration Plan, I think that's going to be very helpful for an annual review, to have it come to us, the planning commission again, and have some documentation, see where they've been and where they're going to go. I think that's going to be very helpful for that whole process. If any of you have any comments, you're more than welcome to speak up. Great? Yeah, okay, thanks. We also completed in May last month, the review of the six-year transportation improvement plan, the TIP. So on our horizon, scheduled items, we just, last week, we, the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan amendments, we made a recommendation and sent it to you all. And you can have fun reviewing those. The update is going to be starting, we're going to be starting the reviewing of the really fun Title eighteen A update. It looks like it's scheduled to be possibly August twenty-first for completion. That those dates could change a little bit, just depending on the different public hearings and then different testimonies and things that we'll be reviewing. So the buildable lands report is scheduled for sometime in September, around the eighteenth, to have that completed. And on, based on that buildable lands report, we'll provide recommendations to the city council on any changes, if any, to the residential zone density throughout the city. That looks like the middle of October is kind of on the schedule. And then in early part of November, to review the twenty twenty comprehensive plan docket is kind of our outline to date.
Was that over off at Seventy-Fifth?
The Wal, next to the Walmart property, mutual materials.
What's your crystal ball thought on the review of the buildable lands report and how that it might impact your recommendations down the road on comp, plan changes because of density issues, maybe?
Yeah, it could.
You did that last year, right? The buildable lands report last year. We've seen lots of activity in the last.
You, if you're taken away or not allowing, you have to put it somewhere else. And everyone that comes in before us, it's fine, but not my next door, not my neighborhood. So if everyone says not in my backyard or not in my, you know, next door, where, where is it going to come from? So that is a tough, tough issue, especially when the applicant says that the, you know, in construction, outdoor activity of the mutual materials, building these bricks. And they just were reluctant to say, hey, housing might not be the best fit. And if you change it to the NC two, we'll probably withdraw our application. So, you know, you're kind of feel for the citizen on the applicant applying for that. But in the same token is we have to have some.
Question there on the guy who wanted a drive-through, was it op, option for a drive-through in that location?
I think it was more than that specific. It was the residential in that area. That was to me, my, my take is that was more important not to have the residential in that area. So, so clarification, you know, is down the road, that building for the buildable land report, that's going to probably help out a little bit more in seeing this is what we're going to do.
Nothing else. It's good to do that because there's been so much development activity. It'll be nice to assess what's left, what's remaining, what can be done in terms of density or not.
And the staff did a great job. I mean, across the street, there's residential and there's, you know, so you know, you're, you're catch twenty-two and, and, yeah, it's hard. It's just hard to please everybody, as you know. You're not going to make everyone happy.
Yeah, exactly. Otherwise, no one would run for office, right? Any other thoughts or comments? Mr. Branson?
Just on that, same, same thought on that, you know. One of the primary policies in our comprehensive plan, you know, under land, land use is that we should be making decisions to ensure there's sufficient capacity to meet growth projections under Growth Management Act and the others. And if you recall, when we did the downtown sub-area plan, a great deal of effort and data was provided to us about how that plan itself significantly increased the capacity for, for, for housing in the city that, that was, was, was going to go to be able to, to do that. So that we're not particularly, in the near term, looking at a shortfall. Now, within the next short period of time, there's a couple of things that are planning that may inform us with a discussion. The deputy mayor talked about the buildable lands report will help us take a look. The deputy mayor talked about the buildable lands report will help us take a look at capacity. Where has, where has, where has capacity increased, where has capacity damaged, vanished? But we're also coming into a year where there's going to be a census and that's gonna create a nu- a newer updated raw data. That then, uh, the countywide planning policies and the Growth Management Act and the Puget Sound Regional Council. Is they are particularly looking at, uh, assigning capacity to the city. You know, uh, that's another factor that'll change in the equation. But it's not really a factor that we have any new data this year. The newest data we have is the increased capacity regenerated with the downtown, um, sub-area plan. Um, and, you know, and one of the goals of that plan was to put capacity in, in, into the, uh, into the system. And, um, you know, and I, I would note that there was, in addition to the one that you mentioned. One of your recommendations was, um, on another proposal was to deny an applicant who wanted to rezone residential. Property into commercial property, uh, to be able to go through and do that. But I well noted that there was not unanimity about the, the recommendation on whether that area should be neighborhood commercial or simply commercial. Um, and the differences in uses that that, that, that had. And I'm, so I'm sure that when it gets to us, that we'll also hear in our own public hearing, um, about that. And, um, we'll be sure to let you know how that stills, uh, coming back with you. So you, 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 you understand whether we go with what you recommended or whether we don't, what, what the, what the conversation was like.
Any other questions you might have? The only other one I have, if I would, deputy mayor, is the, uh, the sign code. I know you, you spent some time on that as well. Is there anything that the planning commission should have looked at differently or, you know, our, our recommendations? Since you did spend a lot of time and there will be some changes, um, coming up?
As I recall, I think we passed it the other night, right? Last week? And so some of the changes, um, that came to us, you know, we were likewise concerned by the, the readability of it, to make it simple. For folks, uh, which makes enforceability a little bit easier. But I think one of the challenges is because of the change in the law that prompted the whole review in the first instance. The state v. Gilbert or whatever the heck the, the case was. It, it created a, obviously a content neutral, a little bit of anything goes sort of approach to the code. And so we struggled a little bit with accommodating a lot of the small business owners who have a need to have good signage and more signage. You know, more is better in their perspective for many people. Dealing with the real estate industry, dealing with political signage, because, you know, you can't provide a, a scope of time, place, manner with regard to political signage. It's different than the others because of the content, right? So that was some of the things that we struggled with when we, I think we broadened and made a little bit more flexible in the final product. But, Mr. Branser?
Well, I, I, I think the most significant, the most significant, uh, area where we perhaps deviated from your recommendation. And recognizing that there was almost five months between your recommendation and, and us getting around to it. Had to do with, in the area of temporary signs. As, as you work through it, there was going through where there was a temporary signs, we're gonna have a mix of permitted signs and others and the, the, it was. And you, you was struggled to, I mean, you came up with recommendations that were based on certain groupings of zoning areas to be able to go and do that. And, um, ultimately, the, the, the council looked to move in a direction that maybe wasn't even proposed to you. To totally eliminate the, the concept of permitting temporary signs. You know, you know, other than whether they were prohibited or not. And so that, 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 that essentially drastically changed one table that amounted to a third of the code.
Simplify it, open the door.
And, um, uh, you, part of that had to do with a concern that the council had, that I know that the commission shared about. That the final product have some and be enforceable. Okay, and if you wrote something down, you'd be able to, to enforce it and, um, um, so it, it went in that area. I think it, it down in terms of the minutia of things, uh, that, um, the, the council chose of, uh, to, uh, uh. A prohibition of feather banners where that was not in your recommendation. Your recommendation was to keep it somewhat as a, uh, as feather banners as a, as, as, as a sign option in, in the city.
And then to avoid Mr. Branser serving as a meteorologist, we took out the, uh, the phrase of removing temporary signs in the case of inclement weather. Cause we were a little concerned about how to define inclement weather around here. So we don't have to worry about that.
Well, it's my third, third time doing the sign code. And I just wanted to see if there was some means that I, we should have looked at differently or, or not.
You guys did a good job, you guys did a good job. I think it's, it, it's helpful because whether it's the sign code or some of the other issues on your two thousand eight recapitulation. It gives the process greater depth to have you guys take the first bite of the apple. Because you represent a bunch of different voices and constituencies out there in the city as well. And your collective minds are very helpful to chew on this stuff. And then when it comes to us, you know, we get a chance to chew on a little bit further and have a public hearing if, if necessary on some of these items. So I, I think, yeah, you know, I'm not much of a big process guy personally, but I have come to respect it, uh, over the course of time. Because I think it does result in a better product, at the end of the day. So, no, there's nothing wrong with what you guys did and, and I think it was just on target, but we have the chance to tweak it and tweak we do. Whether it's some public art proposals or, you know, sign code or anything else. One of those things.
Any other questions, comments?
I think if you, um, if you talk about, we're limited on where we can go, so we're basically stuck in there, you gotta go vertical.
Right.
And so as, as, as the council gets a vision as to where that's going, that can be fed back. So if we have a public hearing, we can talk about some of those things.
Well, from a, a verticality, if you will, I think the sub-area plan that you guys reviewed and proposed, recommended to us and which we adopted. Uh, that is where you're gonna see vertical. And I'm hopeful that we're gonna have, I think we're all hopeful, all of us, including you folks in the planning commission. We're all hopeful that somebody's gonna take the laboring oar and make the investment to do a really good vertical project that's mixed juice. And provide some of the nice glazing we talked about and some of the design amenities Mr. Guerrero beat over our heads with. So that's where it's gonna be, it's gonna be the central business district, maybe in the transit oriented, you know, areas at some point, but primarily here.
So if you, when I first came on the, about the planning commission, they, they had some training and it has some people come down from one of the cities up north. And nobody talked about the program that they have to take you off a little bit when you look at it. So they're telling you how you're supposed to live. And, and, but they, they use different terminology. It's a checklist to make sure that you communicated with your citizens, all of the things that need to be considered when you're growing.
Right.
And, and so if, if, if that gets done, then, uh, and, and we're communicating that to citizens, the people that have property or some ideas, they, they get into it. You know, and so that gives a little, we have to think from the leadership point of view, from the city council point of view. That can give some thought leadership to the community of where we're driving this vote, so that people can come alongside and, you know, fill in the holes. And, and the holes are getting more and more lifted.
Right. It all stems from the comp plan and it goes from there, so.
And I do wanna recognize that staff, they've been excellent on, uh, questions or, or situations where we not always agree with the staff recommendations. And have them, um, do some proposals and say, hey, what is this gonna look like? So they've been excellent on that over the years, have been really super good. So we appreciate the, all of their hard work, um, definitely.
Well, it's good to have bright, new staff members and it's also great to have folks with historic memory that can help guide some process based on. This is where we've come from and here's where we're going. There's gonna be a lot of change in the next five years, I would think, five to ten years. And the buildable lands report will be a big key to reviewing where we are with where we thought we were going to be and now where we're kinda ending up with policy work. So, any other questions? Any else, guys? I just wanna say thank you again, you guys, as I mentioned, provide, uh, more public voice and input into all these considerations. I think that's very appreciated, appreciated.
Oh, I know. It is.
Right.
We have staff working round the clock and they're gonna really make it right the first time.
Just don't have inclement weather provisions.
Right. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys, yep. Okay, next we have a review of Lake Grove Properties, a multifamily tax exemption proposal. And for this, we have Mr. Buer.
There's a little bit of setup here.
Sure. Yeah, it takes some, sure. Yeah. Mr. Buer, I see you brought us washers and dryers.
Amongst many things.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Again, this is a, uh, review of a proposed multifamily tax exemption application. There's a couple of errata comments I would like to bring to your attention. Some of the project exhibits that you have in your documents didn't shrink down the way they were supposed to. And so they came across bigger than what they should. We can fix that on the next go-around, but this is a project that you're familiar with, so I'm not sure it's that big of an issue. And then on page thirty-five, uh, under the paragraph labeled tax exemption, uh, there is reference to eight years. This is actually a twelve-year exemption application. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
He's got the twenty percent factor then?
Yes, he would be proposing that twelve of the units would be set aside for either low or moderate income. And I'll get into that in a moment. Uh, just a quick review of this project, since you've seen it before. These are sixty units, uh, located in the central business district target area. Uh, this is located off of both Lake Grove Street and Ninety-Ninth Street. It consists of total of four structures. This is an application that vested before the city's, uh, sub-area plan had been approved. Developer is proposing to set aside twelve units as affordable housing and therefore would be eligible for a twelve-year exemption. The way that works is if the project were to be approved, uh, the developer meets with the city staff. And then we develop a program to make sure that those twelve units are set aside. You know, there's cities, they hire a, the developer hires an accountant who prepare, prepares those documentation that, to the city and then we approve it. And then, and there was a requirement that you submit an annual report thereafter for a period of twelve years. If this project were to be approved, uh, the tax exemption probably wouldn't come into place until two thousand twenty, because it takes a year to build this. So twelve years would take this out to two thousand thirty-three. Very briefly, the city council did review this project on January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And in my words, uh, the comments that come to my mind were that the council found the project to be, um, plain. And that, uh, was of, of modest design and that you desired to see more. And so you requested that I meet with the developer and go back to the drawing board to see what we could find. Uh, we've met on several occasions, uh, we actually toured an apartment complex in DuPont, nearly got thrown off the property by accident. Uh, but nevertheless, we had a, a very good conversation with the maintenance staff, uh, at that apartment complex. And, uh, learned quite a bit about that project and the things that they do to improve quality construction and, uh, try to reduce maintenance costs. And that comes back here in a few minutes. Next piece to this is that, uh, I did talk to the developer about perhaps changing the design. Uh, the council was not necessarily excited about having the parking in the front of the building. Uh, he's expressed his reasons why in some of the correspondence that's contained in, in your materials. So therefore, there was no alteration in the building design except for some, uh, modest items. One would be to modify the roof, uh, roof, if you will, to allow for more cutouts. You have some of that already on the project, but, uh, he was indicating to me that that was an area that had some options that, uh, the city and he as developer could review and talk about. Well, I think one of the issues with this projects makes it look less than, uh, to improve its appearance would be to go with some of the earth tones. Rather than with blue and white, um, and so there was a desire to, to do some things there. But the biggest category was the improvement in the construction quality, which is a different approach that we've not seen with, um, uh, these types of projects in the past. And that has obviously been an issue with this council and previous councils as to the quality of construction for apartments. And so a variety of things have been proposed and I have brought some, uh, design materials over off the table. And, uh, you can also see them in, in this, uh, design, uh, handout that he's provided this, this evening. First of all is the use of fibers, fiber cement signing and trim. This actually is fairly expensive and is close to using wood, uh, lasts much longer. I did talk to our building official and, and, excuse me, our inspectors, who felt like this was a superior quali- quality product than in other, other types of products. Both of them have been involved in the private construction trades for many years. Uh, more quality handrails, uh, no use of vinyl gutters. Roofing materials with a forty-year lifespan and installation of higher-end amenities. And that's what this, uh, design board is attempting to show. Uh, you do not have a common laundry room, as you would find in some apartment complexes, each of the units would have their own laundry facilities. I know that this project has, has been, uh, reviewed with mixed results from the city council. And so I'm just here to listen to your comments as to whether or not you wish to move this project forward for action at your next regular meeting. And with that, Deputy Mayor Whalen, I return this back to the council for your thoughts. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I will turn this over to the council if they have some thoughts and can have a little discussion here. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. So help me with the nomenclature when you say, when, when they talk about they threw in affordable housing and they say a hundred percent. They give the percentages, what do those mean in reality? What does an apartment rent for?
I read your mind, so.
Thank you.
So I knew that was going to be a question that would come up. And so what I'm trying to do is I'll walk you through an example. And the low and moderate income definitions are actually found within this section of the code. And I'll just start from this process. In order to be eligible for the twelve years, the project must make at least twenty percent of the units affordable to low and moderate income families. For the duration of the exemption, now let me just stop there. Usually affordable housing programs, there is a deed restriction sign. Usually affordable housing programs, there is a deed restriction sign that's much longer than twelve years. In this particular case, multifamily tax exemption is only laying out that it is only good as long as the exemption stands in place. So at the end of twelve years, it can go back to market rate. So that's one of the big differences. Now, low income is, I'm gonna give you the formal definition and it'll confuse you, then we'll get into the specifics. Low income is income at or below eighty percent of the Pierce County median income. Moderate income is between eighty to a hundred and fifty percent of the Pierce County area median income. Now, as of two thousand and nineteen, the area median income is sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for one person. That's median income. And so say, for example, a person comes up and wants to qualify for one of these affordable units. And the person says, I make, and I'm using this number as an example, forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars annually. That number is sixty percent of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight, which qualifies as low income. Now, the next piece to this is, okay, now it's forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. You cannot exceed thirty percent of that for rent, including utilities. So if I take the forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and take out thirty percent from that, that equals a rent annually of twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars or one thousand, thirty-nine dollars per month for rent plus utilities. So that's what this person can be charged in this specific example. Now, that number that I started with, the example, forty-one, five, six, seven, can vary. And it also is dependent upon the number of people in the family. So you have to take all that into account. But an attempt to make this simple, I'm just using the one-person situation. That also means that that one thousand, thirty-nine per month, depending upon how the contract is written, could be adjustable for inflation rate on an annual basis. So I see that as a slight increase in CPI from the first year on to the twelfth year. So it just doesn't stay flat. Now, the other thing that goes on here, and this is important. The owner is responsible for annual compliance review and they need to file with the city a notarized declaration that the property is in compliance with the provisions of what's in chapter three, or title three. We send out an annual reminder to applicants, reminding them that when the required documentation is due. And then we are required to submit a report by December thirty-first to the Department of Commerce for every one of these projects that uses a twelve-year period. And in the annual reporting, what is required is a statement of occupancy and vacancy for the previous twelve months, certification that the property has not changed use, description of changes and improvements constructed after issuance of the certificate of tax exemption, if any. And then the tough one is, for twelve-year exemption, income eligibility of tenants reviewed each year the exemption is in effect. Now, we've had a number of projects in the city of Lakewood, I think the total is five hundred and thirty-one units have been built with multifamily tax exemption program. Nobody has taken advantage of the twelve-year exemption until very recently. The first one will be the Town View Apartment Complex, which is also located on Lake Grove, and which has a smaller number of units. And then this one, which is at sixty, which would have twelve units set aside. Tax exemption proposals are labor-intensive for staff. And so I, separate from this subject, I intend to bring back something in our fee schedule to discuss these annual reports because it's a lot of work on our parts. And if we miss deadlines, then Department of Commerce gets upset. Does that answer your question?
That helps. So let's start with, I'm looking here, four structures. Each building, one studio, one one-bedroom, one two-bedroom, and two three-bedroom on each floor. What's the market rate on those, that kind of stuff for a new apartment?
The rents are going up fairly frequently. I don't know if you've seen this report in the TNT. As I recall, there was a four percent rate increase for a one-bedroom unit. I think the number in the TNT was reported at fourteen hundred dollars per month. That's much higher rents than what we've typically seen in Lakewood. However, while that rent is rising, it is lower than many of the other rents found within the area. So Lakewood apartments remain affordable, but the rents have increased a little bit more in Lakewood than in other cities. We're just, I believe, kind of catching up. Eighteen hundred dollars for a two-bedroom apartment, not uncommon these days. So I don't see rents going down because there is a potential housing shortage. HUD came out with a report about two years ago that said the Pierce County region needs to build six thousand, six hundred units over a three-year period. That would be twenty-two hundred units per year. Lakewood's percent of that is eight percent. And of that, Lakewood would have to be building approximately a hundred and seventy units per year in order to do its share during that timeframe. We have been building quite a few single families. There have been some apartment complexes being proposed. We may or may not meet that number within that timeframe. But that's just to keep where rents are at. In order to really have reduced rents, you need to have a bigger supply. And I just don't see that happening right now.
We're still playing catch-up. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You mentioned that this twelve-year tax exemption is a relatively new phenomenon. Why? Because it seemed to recall we've had discussions about eight-year tax exemptions, but now it's going to twelve. Why is there this change?
I really haven't questioned the developers on this because it's their option. But my thinking would be that when you take a look at the numbers, because when you do the math, the economics are there. If you can maintain these kinds of rents for twelve years, plus get a tax reduction for twelve years, your return probably is probably going to be better.
So as I sit here, I can interpret that to mean it helps the developer, but it does nothing for the low-income families who need housing, does it?
That's one interpretation. The other interpretation is that you're having some level of new affordable housing being built, other than none at all. The other argument to that is, it's not about affordability, it's about having units available.
Agreed.
And that's one of the issues it seems to be having in the region.
Well, that gets me to my last point. The Wall Street Journal reported about two months ago on these very types of tax exemption programs. They find that they are, at best, zero-sum. That as far as the people are concerned, and it's not that I'm not against this program necessarily, but I wanna, I'm playing the devil's advocate here. This doesn't help the people, it's designed to help. It helps the developer. And I think what I'm saying is, what I'd like to hear is somebody say that. This helps the developer. This isn't about providing, this is providing low-income housing for twelve years. And then, as you pointed out, the rates to those units can go right back up to market value, which I wonder what will look like in twelve years. Again, it's, the economics, I understand. It's where do the people fit into this and how are we really helping anybody here but the developer?
Maybe I'll pop off a little bit on that question, I have some others, but then I'll turn over to Mr. Bokey. We have few tools in the tool chest to incentivize development, good development, the kind of development we want. This is one of those tools. I would beg to differ a bit. I would say, not only does it help the developer bring product to market, but it also helps expand capacity. And if we don't have developers willing to risk capital and bring product to market, you're not gonna have as much capacity as you might otherwise hope for. So I think it does help potential residents, you know, and developers alike. But to me, as a private guy who does a lot of stuff with real estate people, it's about how do we get people to come to market? And sometimes, the market conditions are such that, you know, you could put an apartment like this in downtown Seattle where the construction costs are roughly the same, maybe a little higher in Seattle, but the rents are so much higher. So getting them to come down to Lakewood, or someplace southbound, where the rents, vis-à-vis the cost of construction, are not as high, it's a little bit of a harder swing to make the capital investment. Again, that's anecdotal. I don't have necessarily all personal knowledge, but I represent a fair number of people who do this kind of thing.
So my question, and I do appreciate that the developer came back with at least some changes because it was really a non-starter when they first brought it forward in January because it doesn't comply with our current code. It complied with the code that was in place before we did the downtown plan, which is one concern to me. But I guess, compare and contrast for me, just down the street, we did an exemption.
Right.
What was the difference between that project and this project from?
In terms of aesthetics, in terms of design, in terms of?
Before I answer that question, I'd like to go back to Mr. Simpson's remarks. A couple of things, the multifamily tax exemption program, even since inception, seems to always be under attack by somebody. There's been a lot of controversy over this program in Tacoma, in Seattle. There have been proposals to change it. And I will also tell you that the cities, each individual cities, have taken the multifamily tax exemption program and tweaked it to its specific desires. So what the legislature said versus what the outcome has been, has been different. And then that leads me to the next part, is that the legislature is actually doing analysis on the multifamily tax exemption program and Lakewood is one of the cities it's looking at. And I think it's mainly because we spend a lot of time doing the economic analysis on this. But one of the reports that came back was about this low and moderate income definition. That appears not to be working as it's been designed. And how it's been structured, which is basically based upon HUD regulations, isn't meeting the needs of the public. So I wouldn't be surprised in the next year or so that the legislature comes back and takes a look at this and tweaks some of those definitions for low-income housing and moderate-income housing. And may also require it not be just twenty percent, but the number being different. So something to be aware of, we're talking about it, I wanted to make sure that you had my knowledge.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, I'm not opposed to any of this, I'm certainly not, I am a capitalist in every way of the word, but there is also a human element to this. And you've addressed that and I wondered if you were gonna come around to that, Dave, because that's exactly what the Wall Street Journal report was talking about. It's the human capital here. And I think if we're going to talk about increasing density and doing all the things that we've set out in our plan, then we have got to come to grips with this. And while I appreciate what the developers are doing, and Deputy Mayor is absolutely correct, it is doing what we want to see happen in the city. I don't want that human part forgotten. Thank you.
And then now, going back to Mr. Bokey's questions, comparison, compare and contrast. I've actually been on-site of the new Town View project. I've toured many of the units. Some of the big changes are, it has a flat roof, which is really unique in Lakewood because most places don't build flat roofs. So it has a unique style to it that is different than everything else. The next thing is, they pulled the units up next to the street. And part of that, too, is they also, you've noticed, you put the iron gate around it, which is perfect, which is exactly what you want to do, so people know that the demarcation line between public and private. So that's a big change. Then the entrance into the parking area is between the two buildings and the parking is in the back. Okay? And then there are some really nice design features where they have these very large porches and viewing areas on the second floor that make this kind of an exciting place to live. I mean, I think a lot of people are gonna find it very amusing and fun to be in that type of product.
Ceiling heights are high, too.
It attracts your eye. And I think that when they get it done, they're gonna paint it up and it's gonna look really nice. It has some great views of Lakewood on the upper level. And so they really tried to take advantage of it. Now, what you see with this project is more of a traditional apartment complex. And part of this is controlled by the layout of the property. You know, here, in the other one, you have a kind of a big square. And so you can work with it differently. This piece of property is juxtaposed as two rectangles tied together. So that poses its own unique standards. Here, he has designed a product that he's familiar with and that he believes has a certain marketability that he wants to move forward. And he's been very clear with me, this is what I do. I am successful when I do it this way, this is why I'm less inclined to perhaps do something a little bit differently. Plus, I spent a lot of money on design drawings and so forth, I'd like to move the project forward. So in response to that is, is can we build a project that has more details in the window trim, the doors, allowing for an improved quality within the interior so that the tenants have a better experience? We've seen this happen a little bit in one of the other multifamily tax exemptions where they had extra money, so they put it into it. And they talked about it later and said it was a great move on their part because it increased tenancies during a downtime. So those are some of the things that he has attempted to do with this project. Am I saying that this is the best design? No, but this is an attempt to ameliorate the desires of the city council. Do I expect the city council to be in full support of this? Probably not. I think there's some very strong feelings here about aesthetics and architecture. Is this sufficient? The council needs to tell us. Sure. I can put this in the council office upstairs?
Or we can take just a couple of minutes and stand in this direction and then give you a question. I have a question for you on the design thing. You know, for all the economic stuff I just talked about, I am one of the guys who's probably concerned about aesthetics in the town center simply because we've gone to so much trouble in the last couple of years to focus on something different in the Central Business District. Is this in the colonial area? You know, a little thing might be some brickwork on the lower level, some just simple little design ideas that might tie in. The other thing, like the Town View Apartments, on these bump outs you got on the second, third story, one person's opinion, maybe that could be a different kind of material. It might be a little more modern, perhaps, like the Town View place where they got some flat panels in addition to the siding, or vertical siding, just something that breaks up the articulation a little bit. Otherwise, it's kind of, I don't want to say ho-hum because that could be pejorative, but it's a little ho-hum for me.
Same, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I guess upfront, I would say that I'm not supportive of incentivizing this by using the multifamily tax exemption for this development. That's not to say that we can stop the development, the development is vested. The permits are there, the developer can build what he has to be able to go and do that. But in contrast to the other project on the same street that we did award a multifamily tax exemption to, that project very closely approximates the standards that we wrote into the downtown area plan. And we're just, you know, in our first year of that plan and we should be incentivizing things that comply with it and that match up with our vision. To, and the major thing is, is it's gonna look like a traditional project that's in Springbrook with parking lots in front of it and not be there and is gonna not be at all. And that's fine, it is the property owner's property, it is, the developer can go to do that and that's fine. To try to negotiate, to get to, in our minds, say, can we justify doing a tax exemption with some of the aesthetic things? can we justify doing a tax exemption with some of the aesthetic things? It's like, is it okay if we put lipstick on this pig? You know, that's really kind of the way that I'm seeing it. So, one, I appreciate the fact that there's going to be an increase in housing and that it will be new. It won't be exactly what we were hoping for. And in our packet, the letter from the individual associated with the developer indicated that they wanted to avoid having to substantially meet the standard or to meet the standards in our downtown area plan. So they expedited to get in to make sure that they vested under the old rules because, and the explanation seemed to be that they might have had to either add an extra story to get the same number of units or they would have had to have fewer units. You know, and that's a decision that they have there. I appreciate Mr. Viewer providing us the financial impact sheet that sort of speaks to if this was going to cause something to be built or not. The comparison is, well, if you build apartments, then there'll be utility taxes and other taxes and things there as opposed to just the taxes that we'd get for vacant land. But this is a set of parcels that's already been put together, that it is a, you know, staying vacant land for 12 years is not what I think reality will be. But the reality, it will be, it will be a long-term, non-conforming structure in the downtown. Okay? And I don't necessarily know. Because when we talk about what is it in terms of, what is the city going to get out of this? I mean, to be really clear, when I evaluate this as a property tax exemption, it means that the value of this property is, on the tax rolls, is going to stay low for, in this case, 12 years if we were to approve it. Okay? That doesn't mean the city will get less taxes. It doesn't mean the school district will get less taxes. It doesn't mean that the fire district will get less taxes. It just means somebody else will pay them. And for a property that isn't exactly, that, I mean, significantly is not what we want to be in terms of how we would like future development to be, to do that. You know, the ideal thing is if we could do this and the person would say, we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll do something that substantially complies with 18B. You know, I'd be open to an agreement like that. But this is pretty minor adjustments. And putting the parking lots in front and the buildings way in the back is the exact opposite direction we want to go. And if we're serious about wanting to attract people to invest in the downtown, you know, we need to say we're serious about the standards that we wrote. So I'm not one who's in favor of granting this particular project. And I, because I particularly see the significant difference between two projects on the same street. One that is compliant with our vision or aligns with our vision, and one both provide housing. Although I note that 12, this is a tax exemption would get us 12 affordable units, and it just so happens that this project has 12 studio apartments. You know, so I'm kind of not thinking that that's going to get, put 12 low-income or moderate-income families into apartments. It's going to, now, it doesn't necessarily work out that way, but that's, maybe that's coincidental. But if it's necessary for us to vote on it because it's a formal application, I'd just as soon put it on the agenda next time, but I would be voting nay.
Quick clarification question, and then I'll turn to Ms. Moss. So this proposal is 1.45 acres in which they're doing 60 units. What was Town View? It was about 1 point something acres.
It was 28 units.
Yeah. Over how many acres? It's one and a half, isn't it?
It was a smaller size lot, yes. But it was square, which makes a big difference in design.
Of course, the design could be different. You know, I'm not proposing what the developer do with his own land, but it could be less units to accomplish the parking in the back.
It...
Whether that's economically feasible is not the question, I get it. But there is a design that could be had.
There are multiple designs for any project. Again, this is one where the developer has had experience and is comfortable with, and that's why this is being pursued.
Ms. Moss?
Okay, thank you. Those two colors there are the colors that you said we were using?
No, those are not the two colors that are being used. Those are just some examples of the final. You know, you can paint them a whole lot of different colors as well. The point is, is that those colors kind of show the, how you can use that type of material, which is basically a mixture of wood, concrete, and glue, if you will, to make things give the appearance of wood.
I thought we would look like we're in prison or something with that one color. How high up can you go with the building? Because we can't, we don't have land to build out. So how high up will we be able to go?
In the CBD zone, I believe you can go up to 90 feet.
90?
90 feet. And this is probably on the order of 30 to 35.
Ms. Barth, do you have any, Mr. Boki?
I'll to launch on how I would vote on this, but I think I would like to see us go back to the developer and give him another chance to spruce it up a bit to our standards and bring it back to us if indeed they want the tax credit.
May I ask for some clarification? When you say "our standards," are you referring to 18B?
The new standard.
Mr. Boki?
And I'm with Ms. Barth. I do appreciate that they've made some changes. And I will say, for staff's sake and for council's sake, I, every time we do these, I get very concerned over the size of the properties. We've approved two, one on 108th Street and the other one on Lake Grove, that are fairly small properties. And when I look around Lakewood, the properties that cause us the pain are these smaller apartment buildings. So when you look out 30 years, if these things aren't top-notch properties, in my mind, they're a problem. Because once it gets past the first owner and the second owner, but they won't be properties that will be purchased by a real estate investment trust or a large company that you can grab a hold of, right? They might be somebody who now is the third cousin who lives in Michigan. And so these are the properties... So I'm just throwing out an overall philosophy because I voted for those other two things. So, but I just want, I just want everyone to realize, these always give me a lot of heartburn. I still have heartburn over the two that we've done for these smaller properties that sound great when they're going in and they open up and everybody's happy. And 20, 25 years from now, they're somebody's problem. Because they're, you know, somebody picked them up for a song and a dance, and it's the third owner, and they haven't put any money into it. And then they realize, oh, my God, it costs money to run one of these things, and I've got to fix a roof. I don't want to fix the roof. So we have a rental safety program that chases these people down. This is my concern with these smaller properties. And I don't know where the breakpoint is because I don't know enough about it. I feel much better about, like, the Springbrook property that we gave the exemption to. Market rate, a larger property should always have, and if they have a lousy owner, it's easy to bring action against those guys. It's the ones that today it sounds good. 20, 30 years from now, we don't know who they are. And they won't necessarily even live in this country, even like we found out in the rental safety plan. So that's my overarching philosophy. I really, there's some good things about all these projects. I appreciate that these people are building them, and I voted for those other two. But I just wanted to make that known and that every time these 25, 30 unit, although this is 60, so this is, I think, getting into the size range that works. But these smaller things really do, I think, they're trouble down the road. And to the extent that we encourage them, you know, so I think we need to be very careful about how we go forward with any of these things. 60, I don't know if that, where that fits in my little head. But the other ones I do worry about.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. I voted for the other two as well, just like Councilman Boki said. But this one bothers me. Mr. Branstadter is right. Somebody's going to pay those property taxes. It won't be the developer. And then I look down here and I say, our intent is to remain in ownership of the property for at least 10 years. So the developer builds this. Maybe they meet our, you know, they do all the aesthetics they want. We grant this tax exemption for 12 years, and they haven't paid a penny in property tax.
Let me flip it.
And we do. Now, Dave, I'm not as smart as you are, but that just strikes me as being a little unfair.
Can I clarify something?
Go right ahead.
They're not paying property taxes on the structure. They're paying property taxes on the land, just for clarification.
But they're not paying, okay, they're not paying a person... They don't pay like the rest of us pay. Whether we own a business, whether we own our own home, et cetera. And I take Mr. Branstadter's point. I mean, I would be more amenable to this if that said eight years or seven years. Because Mr. Boki also hits a point. Give it 20 years, and what have we got? We're going to have the same thing that we've seen before. And who gets caught in the middle? The people we say we're going to help. And damn it, that does not further their helping. And that's where I have a problem with this. And if I had to vote on this tonight, unless I see compelling evidence, otherwise I would be opposed to this as well.
Deputy Mayor?
My thought, did you have a point?
Yeah, so far what I'm trying to...
Are you counting votes?
I am. So there are two that are pretty strong no's, and I have two with great reluctance.
Well, let me give you a third no. And I'm persuaded by Mr. Branstadter's thought because we have put a lot of thought into the sub-area plan, and this is a project that will be here for some time. And the developer has every right to build what he's vested to build. But that doesn't mean we have to incentivize it. So if it were to comply with what we want in the town center ultimately, you know what? I'd be fine to look at the tax exemption as a proper incentive. But if it doesn't, why should we invest the public's money by incentivizing something we ultimately don't want in terms of the style and the amenity? That said, the developer has every right to build what he's vested to build, but not with the tax incentive. That would be my vote. Yeah, and I would bet the mayor would feel the same way. All right?
Thank you.
Did that give you the consensus you need?
It does, and it gives me some things to work on. I appreciate it.
Mr. Branstadter?
Oh, let me just clarify. This is a, an application that's been received. Do, we do need to vote on it. We can, in a discussion and study session, have a consensus that we're probably not going to approve it. But, you know, is, you know, does it need to get on the agenda and be voted?
Ultimately, it will. The way the process works is based upon the conversation I've heard this evening. I will be writing a letter to the developer, basically indicating that staff is rejecting the application and providing reasons as to why that action took place. Thereafter, the developer has the opportunity to appeal to the city council. So yes, if they choose to appeal, then it comes before the city council.
So staff communicates a determination to the developer, and we would, in this particular instance, we would not vote unless the developer appeals and wants us to vote.
Yes, correct.
And what's the timeframe with, within which an appeal would have to be?
Well, I need to get on this by this Friday, but I believe it's 14 days, as I recall.
Our code specifies 14, but the RCW, it says 30. We would be taking the more expansive RCW 30-day appeal period.
Stand corrected. So in the meantime, while there's appeals going on, he also has his building permits. He can't really apply for the tax exemption once his building permits are issued. So he has to make some decisions, one way or the other.
All right, thank you, Mr. Viewer.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward and assist me.
It's always our pleasure to assist you, Mr. Viewer. Next, we have review of the fiscal agent agreement for Lakewood's Choice. And for this, we have Mr. Humphries.
And Mary Dodsworth.
Oh.
And Todd Kraus.
Mary Dodsworth, Todd Kraus.
We do. Because the screen's there, so we'll just share. Ready? Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, for letting us come back and provide some additional information regarding this topic. Several weeks ago, we brought this topic forward for council consideration. Apologize for putting an older version of the contract with it. That was all we had at the time. Since then, we're able to provide you with some additional updated materials that hopefully clarify some of the questions that you had at our last meeting. Another item that we provided for you to help clarify the process, and I'll kind of briefly go over it and then be happy to answer some more questions, was this diagram to kind of help outline, it was in your packet, to help outline kind of the coordination and leadership of this program. So to start off with, Lakewood's Choice has been in the city for four years. It's been, Pierce County has been its fiscal agent, and it's performed a number of programs and services for the citizens of Lakewood very well, successfully. The state's very happy with their work, and the county was happy with their work. The only reason the county is no longer going to be their fiscal agent is some organizational changes within the county that didn't have the staff to support the program anymore. So they did approach the city to become the fiscal agent many months ago. And we did a lot of due diligence to determine whether that would be an appropriate relationship for the city. They approached us to be the fiscal agent, and Director Kraus is here to define that a little bit if we need to. But the idea was that the city would be contracting with the Washington State Healthcare Authority, which is the entity that oversees this program. They have a manager that supervises the staff who implement the program. The city would contract with those independent contractors, and it would be a pass-through. So the city isn't coordinating the programs. The city isn't managing the programs. The city's managing the contract, the reports, and the outcome information, as well as doing the financial, providing the fiscal agent opportunities, I guess, or the fiscal agent tasks, or they'd pay the bills, and we would get reimbursed from the grant. So just this little chart here kind of helps you see that the Washington State Healthcare Authority is the overriding agency. They're the entity that controls the program. They have specific programs, specific curriculum for those programs, and specific performance measures and outcomes that they expect the program to provide. Again, they do have a manager that oversees the program and oversees the work of those independent contractors. Then there is a community leadership team, and we've been on the leadership team. We participate with the leadership team. So we've interacted with this group, and we've participated as a partner with this group in other ways. And so the leadership team is a fantastic... And so the leadership team is a fantastic community organization. It's all of our best partners. It's the school district, it's the library, it's Greater Lakes Mental Health. It's all the people that we work with on a regular basis that are helping to lead or provide leadership to the entities who are providing those services. Again, those partnerships and collaboration are so important in our community. And so again, the program would be coming to the city. You know, choice stands for something. It means choosing healthy options and igniting community engagement, which clearly lines up with our mission of creating a healthy and vibrant community and creating an active and engaged community. So we believe that the programs in Lakewood that would be provided by this organization are important to our citizens. One of the benefits is, is that they've really been focusing in Springbrook over the last three and a half years. And so by having, and that was based on some criterion priorities that the county might have had. But by the city being the fiscal agent, they'll be expanding it to Telecom, they'll be expanding into Northeast Lakewood and some of our other underserved areas. So we do see it as a benefit to our citizens and a benefit to the city of Lakewood. So there was a contract in there, the current template. And there was a section in there that had been modernized to really clarify that it is a pass-through. The city is the fiscal agent and that we wouldn't be contracting for those services. We'd be supporting the, the independent contractors that would be providing those services for the state.
But we still monitor contract compliance.
They'd be, we'd be, we'd be facilitating, yeah, that they would be meeting those expectations in a fashion that we'd be sending the reports into the state. That's where, that would be our, our job.
And the reports are prepared by whom?
The independent contractors.
Okay. So in other words, the money goes directly from the state contract to the independent contractors through us?
Correct.
So then the, the volunteer board isn't really necessarily reviewing contract compliance per se?
No, no.
Nor do they need to, okay. Mr. Bokey?
So maybe we should go, I, I think we got hung up last time on what even a fiscal agent is. Because I think that, that I have an idea about what I thought a fiscal agent was. Other people thought fiscal agent meant it operated, that it somehow had operating authority or we had some kind of control. What is a fiscal agent?
A fiscal agent, the police will take on is really just an administrative program. And that would give eighty percent of the grant funds. Will basically pay the bills according to expenditures they can reimburse them in the states. Ryan here will be making sure that once he gets the paperwork from the agency, that there are compliance requirements to the contract. So there's performance measures that they need to provide, that those are included and then there's a list in the contract states, what it is that they need to provide and to get reimbursed. But again, as Mary mentioned, Dave, they have a program manager. They work specifically with various questions and things that they need to follow through. They can work with that program manager. So really, our goal is just to ask them to report the revenues and expenditures, make sure they're just paying.
But the, but the word you used there was adminis.
They call it administration, administering the financial pieces, I guess. It's what we call making sure that the contract is in place and that we see that they're reimbursed or paying from the city that they're going to be applying paperwork.
And the state, you know, one of the reasons that we were requested to be the fiscal agent is because the city has such strong financial practices and policies and such a, you know, great system in place. That, you know, the state wants to make sure that the resources are being spent appropriately. So the fact that we have, you know, policies regarding backup documentation and that, you know, there's, those kinds of things. So that those, they'll know that those resources are being spent appropriately. And that we're making sure from a fiscal perspective that, that sound financial practices are being followed.
So just remind me real quick, who's the Point Seven FTE Coordinator and the Point Five Program Specialist?
Those are the independent contractors that are hired.
They are, so they're not Lakewood employees.
No, no, no. And they are the ones that actually lead the programs, get the resources, get the supplies, show up at the site, set it up, do the programs, break it down, do the program paperwork around it.
And they obviously work for other organizations other than just this one, I would hope. At Point Seven and Point Five, because otherwise they're not independent contractors.
I beg your pardon?
Potentially. Do they work for other organizations other than just Lakewood's Choice? These independent contractors, they have other contracts?
We.
One, one hopes.
Well, everybody's got a different situation regarding how much time they need to spend doing this kind of work. So we're contracting with them and they're highly skilled and capable of doing the work that we're asking them to do. So in an independent fashion.
I just wrote out there, because there's always this covered worker issue with Ellen and I and all that other stuff. But we don't need to get into that here. The state doesn't like independent contractors in terms of his status. Yeah.
The, the city staff initially was a part of the leadership team. We're not a member of it, but we attend and participate. But we're not supervising the program, so to speak. Leadership team is a group of partners to come in. And I think it's a requirement of the grant is you put a group of people in the community in which you're serving that have similar missions or programs or facilities or whatever your needs are. And so that it can be a comprehensive collaborative program in whatever community it's in, so.
So currently, the city is not involved in.
Managing the leadership, no.
Any time spent with staff doing anything within this.
Well, we're, we're not currently managing this program. But we have participated with Choice from a city's perspective just because the city's a partner like the library and Greater Lakes and things like that. Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Branstadder, Ms. Barth? Mr. Simpson?
We.
Sure. I think so.
Okay. All right.
That would be good.
Thank you. That's it?
Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to just share this flyer. I was going to put it on your tables before we left. This is a, just the Aging Expo. It's the Senior Center Open House one, two-point-oh. And so it's this Thursday. You've had it, probably been invited, but I just wanted to give you a flyer and I, I forgot to leave it with you.
I'm so aging myself, I had to put my glasses on to see it.
Yeah, this is a visit, not a.
I, I did follow this on my Facebook and people were excited about it. People are involved. They were excited to see this.
I'll be there. Yes, there's probably here this week, so the manager will probably share that information. Thank you.
Okay. Before we launch into the review of the 2019 financial report, what's your estimate on time? I'm trying to decide if I give these guys a couple minutes of a stretch break.
I can do it in five minutes.
Really?
I can do it in three.
Okay, we'll go for it. If it was going to be thirty-five to forty, then I'd say we'll take a coffee break, but go ahead.
Oh, yes. So this is just the first quarter report. And it doesn't include the carry-forward budget adjustment that the city council just approved in May. So it's really looking at the year-end carryover of the ending fund balance and then what we have budgeted for 2019 in the adopted budget. So the general industry fund, you're going to see a lot of money, ending fund balance of ten-point-two million dollars. But remember, this is first quarter, includes the first distribution, big distribution of property tax. So we will be drawing down on those. The carry-forward budget adjustment anticipates using some of those ending fund balances as well. But we are in compliance and we continue to be in compliance with our ending fund balance reserves. And that ending fund balance reserve is just under five million for the twelve percent. As you've seen in the city manager updates, the sales tax has increased quite a bit. It's three-hundred-and-twenty thousand over what we did in 2018. And we were conservative on our budget in the sense that we don't budget for one-time or adding the market fairness act monies. So from a year-to-date revenue estimate compared to actual, we're up about five-hundred-and-forty thousand. And some of that is in retail and construction. In the retail, we have some one-time retail, there were some sales of buses. And we've had that through the years. And so that brought in quite a bit of sales tax. We also had some increases from our dealership as well, so that's contributing to that.
Todd, though, about the decreases, are those concerning as we go forward into nineteen? Like development service fees and?
Yes, I was just going to tell you the good news first.
Okay.
The other area that's increasing is the gambling tax. And that's up one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, but we saw an increase in 2018. Yet we held the budget pretty conservative as well. So getting to the downside, which the city council has seen and we're aware of it, is something that we'll be looking at in the mid-bionic budget adjustment. And that is in the utility tax. We're seeing a decrease of one-hundred-and-eleven thousand for the first quarter. We're seeing that the landlines and the telephones, cell phones are continuing to decrease. And cable continues to decrease. We have some decreases on the energy side as well, so really weather-dependent. And, you know, not necessarily if it's warm, we turn on air conditioning, because not everybody has that. And when it's cold, doesn't necessarily mean that people are turning up the heat. So I think they're making some choices there. For community and economic development, we're seeing a decrease from the year-to-date estimate of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand.
That's a lot.
Dollars. But before I get to that, I do want to say the good news is that high crime is down. So we're seeing about a sixty-two thousand dollar, seventy thousand dollar reduction in high crime funding that we would have gotten, but because it's safer here, we're not getting that type of money. Community and economic development. So if you compare it to 2018, the decrease is about three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. But we had some major permits that were issued in the first quarter of 2018 that we're not seeing now. And one of those is the Springbrook Apartments. These fees were about one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars in January 2018. We're not seeing that type of activity in first quarter. But we do have some very large projects that are pending. We have the Clover, Cloverbrook Apartments valued at about twenty-four million. We have the Starlet Industrial Shell, which is just under ten million dollars. The Woodbrook Springs at seven million. Child Study Treatment Center, three-point-four million. The Lakewood Forest Storage, a six million. The Western State Hospital Tenant Improvements, they have ten-point-three million. That's not all to say this is going to happen this year, but there's things that we know.
These are anticipated, they're not in the queue yet, but.
Yes. And we have a, the Industrial Park Lakewood Logistics Shell. And that's just the shell valued at about eight million. And then tenant improvements will be forthcoming. We have Paradise Apartments at a smaller amount of just over one million and a new water tank. So we've got nine projects of about seventy-one million dollar in valuation. So these fees would be collected at the time that the fees are, you know, the permits are issued. So we've kind of been expecting a lot of economic development. It's really just a matter of timing when this will occur. From a, not the revenue side, but the department has been busy just because they've had a lot of little, smaller permits. So that's just not generating a lot of revenues, but keeping busy. On the cost recovery side, the goal that council adopted in May 2016 was eighty-five percent. The budgeted recovery ratio is eighty-six percent and the year-to-date is fifty-four percent. But it should be noted that when we look at the recovery ratio since the city council adopted the eighty-five percent, it was ninety-one percent in 2017 and one-hundred-and-seventeen percent in 2018. And over the course of the five years between 2014 and 2018 is seventy-nine percent. But if you look at it from midway from 2016 to 2018, the recovery ratio is ninety-two percent. So the reason why I bring that out is over time, if we achieve the eighty-five percent, then we are meeting the city council's financial policies. And speaking in terms of cost recovery, parks is currently at forty-seven percent. The budgeted amount was forty-six percent. And in terms of financial policies, a forty-five percent. So they are, are on target. So utility tax, you know, the revenue increases that we're seeing on the sales tax side, and I mentioned this in the previous report, that is something that we would take into consideration for potentially a one-time adjustment to offset the decreases that we're seeing in utility tax. We'd have to wait and see how the other sales tax revenues are coming in and the other revenue increases that we're seeing, such as the franchise as well as the gambling tax to offset these decreases.
Right. State shared revenues that are down, that's a trend that's likely to continue, right?
The state shared revenues down, these are based on the best estimates that we had received from AWC. And the high crime was a little bit more difficult to anticipate because it really depended on, you know, how we do compared to the state average and.
Same about the liquor. Isn't the state shared revenue piece the negative sixty-nine thousand?
Yes.
Liquor taxes and the like.
High crime.
That's high crime?
Yes. So it's good, right?
It is good.
Just not financially. Um, I believe it's based on last year's numbers, based on a percentage of the average. I have it in the budget document, I just don't read, yeah, yes.
That's actually good news because then as a percentage of the total state, we're dropping.
Yes. And then the other piece I wanted to bring up is the business license. You'll see that on page one oh five, that business licenses decreased by thirty-two thousand compared to first quarter 2018. And compared to the year-to-date estimate, we're down sixty-six thousand or forty percent. And I just ran the numbers for May. And from a year-to-date comparison, for the first four months of 2018 versus 2019, we're down by eleven thousand. From a budgetary perspective, we're down by fifty-one thousand. But our community and economic development department is following up with the state to find out what's going on. There is about over three thousand businesses that have a Lakewood address that hasn't been registered yet. So that is something they said they had anticipated that if we had signed up with the state, we would catch these. And that doesn't seem to be happening. But our community development department is taking a further look at this.
Because the first year, they've kind of gone into that one-stop shop where you go online to the DOR and you click where you work or do business, right?
Yes.
It's supposed to generate.
It's supposed to, but not quite materializing as we would hope. So that's really the highlights that I have for this quarter's report.
Wow, that was four minutes and fifty-two seconds, pretty good.
Oh, wow, I did good, I don't have a timer either.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Bokey? Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. When I looked at the expenses, the, it's only three months, but the jail, our jail cost, is it, is it a, we were catching up on some billing?
And I did take a look at the bills. And there was just some overall increase. It's been like a week since I looked at it, so let me just flip over to that page. If we had any changes or any discrepancies, we'd note it as such. And so in 2019, we had only three thousand from 2018, about just under four thousand. That rolled over to 2019 because we had closed out the books and proceeded with the audit. So we didn't go back and readjust those books. And we're still waiting for, so purely, it appears to be that we just have higher volume. We're still waiting for Pierce County's March invoice. And my understanding that both contracts are under review for Pierce County as well as the Niskali.
Okay, so we don't know yet, there's no trend really, or the trend might be a little up, but.
Yeah.
And we're paying medical now.
Well, we have always accounted for medical. And you can see that on page ninety-four.
Yeah, I got to find it.
Any other questions, Mr.?
Now we're paying medical like every month, it seems more consistent, I guess that's what.
Yeah, sometimes you'll have some months where there's some disputes. And so if they're not resolved in that year, they may roll over to another year. And so in some years, you'll probably see it lower. But really, what is the true number?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the report. I know it's, uh, doing it all quarterly and then rolling it up for a year and then, and then adjusting if those off. But I had a, just, if I could jump around a little bit, I just have a few questions. I'm on page one sixty-five. And this is the human resources performance measures. And which collective bargaining agreement is expired?
We have, let's see, I don't have my budget book with me. I believe it's the APSME one that is going to expire in two thousand, we have two of them. I believe it's the APSME and then also the, the tenants, the LMPG, Lakewood Management Police Guild. I think those are the two that are outstanding.
Okay, but it indicates that we have one that is already expired. If I'm reading that, it's just number of current collective bargaining, unexpired current. And, and we expect to have four unexpired and we only have three. And so I'm wondering, I wish wasn't registering that we were late on one.
I'm not aware of that either. Could I just follow up on that? I have the exact dates, I just don't have it with me.
Okay. That, then I'm on page one twenty-five, which is a kind of a recap of Parks Recreation and Community Services year-to-date. And I was looking at senior services where year-to-date, we're at a ninety-three percent recovery ratio. You know, that, then that, that's well above the target, you know. If I remember, we were trying to get a. a very high recovery ratio there for the activities while we were still funding one FTE of a, of a person there from the general fund. Is there, what's the dynamic that's at work there of where the revenue from the center is paying that salary as well as the cost of what we're doing? I'm, I'm concerned of whether we, we are maybe overcharging seniors if we're generating ninety-five percent when our target was fifty-nine.
So if you look at our, um, estimate, uh, the target of fifty-nine percent, that fifty-nine percent is more in line with the annual actual. So I'm guessing, based on what we've seen, between two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen, that ninety-three percent should drop closer to the fifty-nine percent range. Well, what's included in the senior services is sometimes we get, um, Pierce County monies, and I can't remember what month we get it. And it's about ten thousand dollars. So if we received it in the first quarter, we might not be spending it in the first quarter. We may be drawing down on it later. But that's one of the bigger...
Okay. I, I, I would just be, over, over time, I'd like to watch that so that we're, we're actually not overcharging seniors compared to other patrons of park things to be able to go, 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 go and do that. That, uh... And, um, then I was on page one sixty-seven. And it, and, and, and it was just community and economic development. And, uh, under economic development, it's dollars investment created through economic development efforts with a, um, with a target of eighty thousand. We met that in the quarter. And, um, but I was just wondering, how is that number determined for that line?
I do not have that answer, but that's another item that I will follow up on.
I mean, it's not eighty-one thousand. It's eighty-one million.
Million dollars.
And, 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 you know, we had eighty-one million in that, in the quarter. I'm not quite sure, um, that we're, somehow our efforts as a city have generated eighty-one million. I, 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 I'd be euphoric if that were in fact true and we were going to do that quarter of a quarter. But I just trying, trying to understand how we've calculated that.
Does show you have a hundred...
I'm guessing we have some roll-up of the numbers that get us to there, but we'll follow up.
To show you have a hundred and twenty-five new businesses that might have business licenses.
Eighty-one million? I don't know if it's quite enough.
Yeah. It's a large.
Did you move your business to Lakewood?
Exactly. I wish. That'd be great. Well, thank you. Lots of data. Um, and certainly deserving more of the five or 10 minutes, but I really appreciate the overview. Are there any other questions else?
And I can always cover it in four to five minutes.
Yes. Well, some days we might need it actually because it's such good stuff. I mean, you guys do a good job. You know, we feel comfortable that we're well-steward. Is that a word? We're well-steward? Right. Exactly. If we were having issues or significant financial issues, obviously we'd spend a lot more time. Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We see the items tentatively scheduled for the June seventeen regular council meeting, including proclamation for Congressman Heck, who is outstanding service to the citizens of Lakewood. The bid for the Fort Stilcom Park Improvement Project, North Lane's sanitary sewer extension, an agreement with Site Workshop LLC for design services for the Angle Lane project, execution of an interlocal agreement for the State of Washington Healthcare Authority for Choice, which we reviewed tonight, the multicultural coalition, uh, contract for services to support community engagement events, and the tax exemption issue for Lake Grove Properties, which I assume would not be on the agenda for next week at this point. I'm getting an affirmative nod, which is a head shake.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, Deputy Mayor, I had a question about the vote to approve two thousand dollars for the multicultural coalition being on the consent agenda.
That's where it would be?
Since I, since I serve as the treasurer of that organization and probably should not vote on that to be able to go and do that, it would be, rather than, I, I'd be recusing myself from the entire vote of the consent agenda.
We could just remove that item.
If, if you could, if, if, if that item could be put on the regular agenda, not that I think it's controversial, but I would be recusing myself from voting on that.
Got it. Well, I think that probably makes some sense. And that way you can... Well, and I won't be there. I'm not going to be there next week, so I'm going to be at the Paris Air Show. So then you're down three votes. Yes. Just nod your head again. Yes. Right.
So just you, me, and...
And the mayor.
The mayor.
Right.
Exactly.
So we're going to tentatively, Mr. Manager, throw the item number six on the regular agenda as opposed to the consent agenda because two members wish to articulate their reasons for recusal without backing out of the whole consent agenda, which I think they could remove the one item and talk about it. Yeah. So put it on the regular agenda then. We're good to go. Okay? With that, we have reports by the city manager. Mr. Coffield, the floor is yours. What's that? What's that one?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, thanks for the direction regarding the fire district's various levies. And so, um, just given the timing and the notification of that, first and foremost, you must hold a public hearing. And the soonest we'll be able to do that will be as part of your July first regular meeting. And the public hearing will consist of really three parts. You have three options. One is to consider a resolution supporting, consider a resolution opposing, or do nothing. And, um, under state law, you actually have to give each side, um, you know, the opposition and proponents equal, equal time. Um, and then based on your code, you would then take action on that as part of your, um, July fifteenth, um, regular meeting. So just, um, in terms of a timeline there. Um, I sent out, um, uh, an update on Gravely Lake, um, Linwood on the lake plat. Long story short, uh, both of those streets are public right-of-ways. And because they end at a water of water, they are also a street end. And we provided the map and the language on that. Um, long story short, um, we'll do some additional research regarding some of the activity that's occurring down there. Then we'll look to schedule a meeting with the neighbors and have involvement from, uh, police, code enforcement, legal, public works, and, and, and O and M. Um, one of the things that the property owners can do right now is they can put up, you know, signs saying, you know, private property or something along those lines. Likewise, the city can do that. Um, I think I'd like to await maybe as part of the outcome of the public meetings there. Um, i- if the city does it, we would have to go through a permitting process with, uh, Fish and Wildlife to go ahead and do that, given the proximity to, um, to the water.
To do what?
To put up like a fence or something if we wanted to do something like that. So I think we might be able to get away with just like a pole with a, you know, a sign. But again, the private property owners can do that as well. So, um, but again, just, um, wanted to give you an update, update on that. Um, as a follow-up from your meeting last Monday, when you adopted the resolution, um, recommending that, that the various agencies involved in the train derailment, first and foremost, comply with the recommendation from the NTSB before they resume Amtrak services along those lines. We have sent out twenty-four letters to twenty-four different agencies, including all of our partnering, partners around here, um, you know, surrounding cities, as well as the fire district, the school district, the water district, asking all of those respective agencies to consider a similar resolution. Um, and then as an FYI, we sent the letters and the resolution to our state legislators from twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, as well as our congressional, um, delegation as well. Again, that, we're not asking them to do anything, just as an FYI.
Any feedback?
Um, not from our, um, delegation. Um, however, we have gotten feedback from the folks who we would like to implement the recommendation specifically from Wash dot rail and the FRA. So the gentleman from the FRA said that he would pass it up his chain of command so that it got to the right place. And then, uh, Wash dot rail, um, their CEO has expressed an interest in wanting to get together and just give me hopefully an update on what, what their plan is. So we don't know what it is yet. Um, I think as you've heard from me before, the NTSB recommendations are just that. They're recommendations. It's not something that they have to, um, comply with. But, um, just wanted to give you heads up on, on, on that and what, what's going on. Uh, South Sound nine-one-one, so, um, four of the original signing agents, four of the six signing, original signing agencies have passed the ILA just like this body has. So what's left is Tacoma and Pierce County. And, uh, they're expected to take up the ILA later, later this month. I did want to verify that when the new governing body is stood up, that'll be Councilmember Mike Branstadter, who represents Lakewood. Um, if you would like to do some kind of formal action there, you can do that. Otherwise, right now, I would see him as, if you're okay with that, transitioning from the current body to the new body. I don't know if, I don't think there's any need for you to take any official action unless you felt you wanted to. But at this point in time, I was just going to notify South Sound nine-one-one that Councilmember Branstadter will continue, um, in that, in that role again, unless there's something else different that you folks want to do.
I don't think the entity's changed. It's just the composition of it.
So, and then I know at the beginning of the year, or every two years, you do consider. And so, you know, maybe that's where you, where you deal with it. But right now, it's, so I'll just, I'll just notify them. Custer Road, uh, I think it was Councilman Boki last week asked when the project will done. So hopefully the project will be done in a little over two months. So looking at , uh, the first week, first to second week of August. So...
Yeah. Did you see this today, Joe?
I'm sorry. I don't know what that is.
It's like a four or five-page, uh, executive summary.
Oh, yes. Yes. And, uh, the Public Works Engineering Director will follow up with that gentleman regarding that. You know, we're, we're, obviously we're out there doing improvements now. And then as part of the larger Silicon Boulevard project, we'll be addressing that intersection as well. So... Yeah. Oh, yeah. Neither did, neither do we. Yeah. It's kind of stating the obvious, stating the obvious.
Was that something that was obviously not this iteration of work, but it's something that we've planned to do at some point, right?
It would be, those, those, those issues would be addressed as part of the larger Silicon Boulevard project from that intersection. Yeah, that's correct, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. We're doing design money on that, aren't we?
We're doing design right now. We plan on doing the overlay next year and then in two or three years, come back with the curb scutters and sidewalks.
And that will address this?
I believe so. And that's why I've asked the Public Works Engineering Department to follow up with him. The Salary Commission, um, we still haven't gotten any bites. Uh, I know the city clerk has sent out again another mass mailing to all of our community groups, service clubs, et cetera. So I would just ask this body if you know of anybody who wants to participate.
Well, you should talk to Patrick. He would be a good person to... That gentleman would be sharp.
Uh, the Police Department is going to do some, um, traffic emphasis. And what I mean by that is later this summer and into the fall, um, letting the public know, for example, hey, the Police Department is going to be doing, um, again, traffic emphasis, speed control out on Washington Boulevard, our veterans. And basically, if you get pulled over, you're getting a ticket. Um, and so they're going to be highlighting some of the areas around the city where we have some, some challenges. So, uh, more to follow that later this summer and the fall. So, but again, uh, the chief, um, is going to be doing that again in the near, in the near future.
What's prompting that?
Um, just, uh, you know, just complaints from citizens, you know?
Speed?
Yeah, speeding, you know? And then also just observations by our own police officers, particularly the traffic unit. Um, matter of fact, uh, I was on Washington Boulevard a couple of more, a couple of weeks ago, and it was five-twenty in the morning and there wasn't much traffic. And I got passed in the middle lane. Guy came out and probably going about eighty miles an hour. So I don't know what was going on there.
Grandma Coffield driving in front of that guy or something.
No, actually, I wasn't, no, I was in the middle. There was a car in front of me. There was a couple of cars behind me. So can't be blaming me. Yeah, passed him home. Yeah, right down the middle lane. Yeah. It probably wasn't eighty miles an hour. It was probably fifty miles an hour, but it seemed like eighty miles an hour. Right. In a thirty-five mile an hour zone. Right. So... Last week, we had, uh, two hearings on two, uh, major abatements that we're moving forward on. The first was on, uh, the Car One Village Mobile, Mobile Home Park. And so that was last, last Monday. Uh, there were sixteen people in attendance, all of them residents of the Mobile Home Park. Uh, the good news is that they now have a resident manager who've gotten the attention of the property owner again. Um, I do want to compliment the residents because they own their own units and have to maintain them. And they're really stepping up to do what they, what they can. And so we want to try and, you know, preserve the Mobile Home Park. And again, um, you know, the property owners of the, you know, are, are, are doing what they can. Uh, the biggest challenge is with the, um, electricity down there, the transformer or the source of the elect, where they have the electrical building, um, is a mess. And so that needs to be addressed by the property owner. Um, but, uh, actually, his attorney was here, and so we're working with him on that. Um, also, they do have some, um, sewage issue down there, but they are pumping it about, you know, every three to four weeks. So we're pleased with that. So, long story short, things are moving along. There is, um, another, a couple of other issues that are had, that don't involve the city, but are between, you know, the residents who live there and the property owner in terms of pay and rent. Apparently, the property owner put a stick in the ground with a box. And then somebody, and people putting their checks in there, and then somebody came and pulled the stick out of the ground with the box on it. And, uh, so Car One Village, yeah, off of eighty-four. So, but that's, you know, that's not the city. That's between, yeah. So that's what we're dealing with. Um, but again, you know, the folks that are living there, we're trying to work with them, and they're doing what they can. So we, you know, I really want to tip my hat to, to them for stepping up. So, um, the other one is, uh, Westwood Financial, the owner of the property, commonly known as the former QFC. So their hearing was held on Thursday. And, uh, so there were, I think they had two or three people testify, including the property's owner. Um, what was really interesting is that the property owner's rep commented, yeah, you know, we know we have some electrical issues and we're trying to fix it. And so our team, including our interim building official, the fire marshal, and the building inspector are a little perplexed because in order to address the electrical situation with the building, you got to fix the roof because it's the leaking of the roof that's caused the electrical system to go kaput. And so to replace the roof is, you know, and to bring that building into code is upward of a, of a million dollars. And if they want to do that, that's great. Go ahead and do that. Um, I do expect, um, that the interim building official will be issuing a, you know, findings and notice in order, uh, to move forward with abatement, uh, probably within the next thirty days. The property owner would then have a period of time to appeal to our, our, our hearing examiner. And, you know, um, they can move, move on from there. Meanwhile, um, you know, we've been talking to a couple of developers who have an interest in buying it. Uh, the developers have communicated to us outright that they have no need for the building. And so they're pleased to hear that, you know, the city is moving forward with abatement. And, uh, so that's, uh, that's, that's where we are. Um, it is becoming more and more of a public nuisance. And if you drive by there, I drove by there again this weekend, and I noticed some graffiti, um, also during the evening. If you drive through there, you'll notice people in the parking lot. And, uh, it's just becoming more of a public nuisance, and enough is enough. Matter of fact, if it does get to the point where the building is, is torn down, we're also going to have them fence off that property so that, um, we can cut down a lot of that nonsense as well that's going, that's going on over there. So, um, but meanwhile, on a parallel track, um, you know, they're trying to sell the property and hopefully they can close the deal. They've been trying to sell that property for well over a decade. I'm not quite sure what the challenge is. It's at the location of two of our busiest arterials, and you would think it's a pretty prime spot. But, uh, so don't know what's going on there. But again, at least they have once again, some interested prospective buyers who want to, want to take over the property. The Lakewood Landing Project, um, over on Pacific Highway. So, uh, our Economic Development Manager Becky Newton has set up a Lakewood Landing page and includes some schematics and some information. Um, we've also put on the street the RFP for the commercial broker services. And the reason we are ready to do that is because... And the reason we are ready to do that is because Ms. Newton and her team have been meeting with all of the property owners down there, including Diamond, which owns a good chunk of that area. And they are all interested and partnering with the city and Wash Dot to, you know, develop that and, you know, see how that comes together. Of course, the critical path item is the Wash Dot property itself. Again, this is all in accordance with the agreement that this body approved earlier this year or late last year. We have completed a phase one environmental site assessment. No surprises, there have been some spills down there. So, we do need to go to a phase two to get an understanding of what the, what the environmental impact is on the property. We've also completed an appraisal, and the, the appraisal's coming in at about seven and a half million dollars, though the land itself is about four point six million. And that comes out to about fourteen dollars a square foot, which is actually a little bit below, a little bit below where the market is right now. And then, we're also working on a cost estimate of what it would take to reconstruct that maintenance facility somewhere else in the city. So, the dollar amount in today's dollars is about twenty-five million. The good news is that Wash Dot is using costs that they, because they're building a new facility in Lacey, actually unincorporated Thurston County. So, they're using like for like. So, they're good numbers. They're got good sound underlying assumptions. And then, we're also working to identify a location, particularly down in the Woodbrook industrial area, the Woodbrook Business Park, to relocate them to. At the end of the day, that's gonna be the critical path item, finding the money or the financing mechanism to move them down there. But everything else is moving forward, and we've created again some excitement and some collaboration with all the property owners out there, including, including Wash Dot. So, I really want to commend Ms. Newton for, for her work and her initiative and her leadership there. And then, I think just this, this Thursday is our annual Developers Forum, and that'll be from eight to ten A M. over at the McGavick Center, though there will be a little bit of a breakfast at seven thirty. And so, I think that's everything, that's everything that I had.
Any questions? City manager? Quick question on abatement. I know the Q F C hearing went last week, which is great. Do we treat these vacant lots with a similar kind of a keen eye? I'm thinking about the one across from Safeway that's owned by whatever gas station that does nothing but leave it in tumbleweeds. Do we, can, do we have any teeth to do something for those guys to kind of?
Yeah, when the, when the grass gets to a certain height, you know, we, we ping them. C S R T usually does the same one over at Bridgeport and, and one oh eight. Those are the two main ones.
Do they respond?
Yeah, they do. Yeah. It takes a while. Yeah, because it's, it's the.
We can bring in goats or something?
Oil and, oil and gas. It's the oil and gas industry.
Yeah, bringing goats and charge them like a go to abatement fee. What do you think?
Yeah. I do have a comment. I, I do really, they really are making quick work at Custer. And, and you say it'll be several weeks. I mean, they were already paving one of the lanes today. And between that and Motor Avenue and one hundred and twenty-third, three real good projects that are really far along in June. So, they'll all be wrapped up by the end of the year. So, I, I do appreciate that. And I really do appreciate that the, because we hadn't discussed this Lakewood Landing thing for a long time, and it didn't really seem like it had legs. So.
It's moving, it's moving.
I'm, I'm glad to hear.
It's a marathon.
How many, how much room does Wash Dot need?
So, right now, they sit on about seven and a half acres.
Okay.
And we figure maybe five to six acres.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't need as large of a footprint because the current, the currents, their current property actually includes a stormwater detention facility, which of course, they would need someplace else.
Okay. So, so actually, there's a number of places in Spring Brook they could move.
Uh, Woodbrook.
Woodbrook, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of them. Yes, and that's what we're looking at.
Okay, good. Excellent. That'd be great.
So, a- actually, if I could just add on to that, Deputy Mayor, one of the challenge, another challenge that we have is, so the value of their current property is, say, we'll just say seven million for discussion purposes. And then, the value of the property that they need to buy, maybe in park, maybe in, because they own some property down in Woodbrook, say it's three or four million, right? So, plenty of money, right? Guess what? The state legislature does not allow them to take the proceeds from the sale of that to buy land. It's supposed to go toward roads. So, again, that's something that we're gonna have to overcome. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. That's exact, that's exactly right. Yeah. So, so. But this is probably the furthest along that we have been with this, with this project. And, you know, we'll, we'll keep at it. We'll keep at it.
Very good. Any other questions? I'm just looking to see what I've got going on here. If not, then we're getting close to finale, but we have council comments. Mr. Branstadter?
I'm good, man.
Fantastic. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. A real brief, the farmer's market was fantastic, and I'm still getting great comments and how pleased they are with the success and the venues that we had here this past week. A lot of people let me know they forgot about it, but I just keep following it to them maybe Monday so they remember. And this afternoon, I had an opportunity to attend the dedication of the building downtown Tacoma, the Alberta J Can, Canada. And I didn't have the privilege of meeting her, but obviously, she was a fantastic person that did a lot of moving and shaking. And three of her children spoke at this event. And then, they gave us a tour of the building, the Choice Building.
Fantastic.
And from the outside, you'd never believe the inside of that place. It's absolutely stunning.
Where's it located?
It's on one hundred and fourteenth and South Eleventh Street.
Okay.
And, and the artwork that they did on it was, they had the artist there, and they have it up on the wall. And they're saying that when the lights come on at night, you can see rain, you can see houses, you can see a lot of different things that relates to the building, to the area. It's fantastic.
I dropped by there. I didn't know they, I didn't know they did that.
Yeah, just this afternoon, they, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Beautiful building.
It is. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Simpson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I attended the Clover Park School District Board meeting tonight.
Thank you.
I really appreciated that. I made sure that the certificates and the coins were delivered. But more than that, I was given the opportunity to speak for a few minutes about the symbolism, what that Arlington project means. And I thought it was very well done. I went out of my way to include Dr. Schaefer with me to hand out the certificates and the coins because I, I, despite my sometimes sharp tongue about the board, we have to work with them. And I figure I better walk the talk. I also noted that their board did take a vote tonight. Why is the city attorney laughing at me? I'm just teasing you. That's all right. Oh, she didn't say hearing aid. That's pretty great. There was a vote on what to name the former Alice Mann School. And there was some debate. The board was divided. Some wanted to leave it as Alice Mann, in the argument being that this woman had a tremendous impact in Lakewood. Others argued that it should be Claudia Thomas for the same reasons. And others argued that it should be American Lake. And the discussion reminded me of our discussion over the art project. Some of us have said we should honor what the committee has proposed, while others of us have disagreed with that. They had the same argument there. Their committee work proposed that it be Claudia Thomas. Long story short, it will be named American Lake. There was, there was, it was a good, I mean, they wanted to step outside the box, was the argument they made. They wanted to be much more broad in their interpretation of what the committee had said. And so, I didn't think the vote was gonna go that way. I thought it was gonna go to Claudia Thomas, but it was the swing vote there. One of the council members' mind was changed during the debate, and it will be American Lake.
American Lake Middle School?
Apparently, yeah. They just kept referring to it. And the only other thing I have to point out is I have had some comments made about the shrubbery, the overgrowth, going down Hipkins. And I, I just said I would pass that along to the staff. But otherwise, I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Pretty good. Mr. Bokey?
So, just for the record, because the school parents were asked to vote on that, I think maybe the whole city was asked to vote on that. I actually, after reading about her, I actually voted for Mann, to keep it as Mann, because she was so instrumental, just really an incredible person of combining the, the little districts they had into one. And, and I just felt like to forget her name. But that's their business. I mean, if they want American Lake to find a name.
Carol Jacobs made the argument for Claudia Thomas, and she pointed out the youth council. She pointed out a lot of the things in her, and the best part of her argument was, we're moving forward. I mean, and, and I could see the logic. We're moving from Ms. Mann to Dr. Thomas, and who knows in the future.
Yeah.
But there was a, which surprised me. There was a, I mean, I was, Mr. Branstadter was out there in the audience with me, and he and I talked about this as we walked out to our cars. And I, he and I were on opposite sides. He likes the American Lake. I liked Claudia Thomas. But it's, it's, and again, I go back to the point, and I'm not trying to needle, well, maybe you. But they stuck with, they were trying to, and, and they were trying to stick with what the people, the committee had decided. And I thought, even though, and that's where you and I would have differed a bit, I, I could appreciate that. But the folks who argued that it should be American Lake, it should be larger, they made a very good argument as well that this is about the neighborhood, it's about what we heard from people. And I, I give them courage. They did a nice job tonight.
Yeah, it's, it's naming things is a, an enviable task because those, those are all really good. And, and naming after Claudia would have been wonderful, too. So, last week, last Thursday night, I went to the Tillicum Neighborhood Meeting. Council Member Branstadter was there. Well attended, I thought. They had already seen the presentation from the Fire Department, and they had the Wash Dot people on the, on the hot seat a little bit over, over their construction. But I, I wasn't there for the whole thing. So, Mike would have to, to mention it, and otherwise, I think it went pretty well. I think the letter on Custer Road, I'm glad we're gonna address that because I, I think e- even though it was very long and certainly the individuals is upset. I mean, I drive Custer a lot, so that would be my, you know, that's my commuting point. And so, I realize, you know, every pothole, every, and I've told people, we're gonna pave it, but we don't have the money right now to do all the other stuff. So, it, it is what it is, and we're working on it. I didn't mention to the, because we were just kinda needed to move on, but in my day job, there's a, a council member that does a lot of stuff with P C R C and, or P S R C. And he mentioned that in the Vision 2050, they really are, one of the items that really has come to a head is the ratio, the ra, yeah, the ratio of jobs to housing, and one of especially when it comes to King County and specifically Seattle. So, as we've, because the outlying counties are all saying, we seem to have a very low ratio, very, almost equal ratio, jobs, housing, new residents and jobs, while, you know, Seattle's running something like three to one or something jobs. And so, you're just setting yourself up. Can you, can you really, truly bring that many people into work every single day on your sounder system and what's planned and... So, apparently, there, there may be some movement on that topic, actually, that, that at least in the initial discussions, the Seattle folks, I guess, in particular, the King County folks, are beginning to realize that they're gonna have to relant. Now, they don't want to relant on the housing side because they don't wanna, they don't want to agree to like destroy every single family neighborhood they have. I mean, they're meeting a ton of resistance on these single family neighborhood changes, even in Seattle, that they, the ones they just did was blood sport, right? And, and I mean, there, there was one council member who voted for it and immediately resigned just to get out of there. And, and a relative of mine is, is a constituent of his, and she believes it was totally contrived. And he did this. He already had a job lined up with somebody, you know, and, and is very forthright in her opinion, shall we say. So, there's, it really was a no win situation even in Seattle where they said, well, we're gonna upzone some places. And it was real ugly. And they're beginning to realize that, you know, we just can't upzone every single labor. We're just not gonna be able to do that. We're not gonna be able to create the volumes of... So, they're now beginning to at least think about that they'll allow jobs to go to Snoomish Kitsap and Pierce County. I haven't had a long discussion with the individual who's in the meeting, but, but he, he has mentioned publicly a couple of times to the county council that this is, that they're realizing this. It's one of the feedbacks they've gotten from the very, from our inputs and from all these, especially from the surrounding counties, that you expect us to take all the housing, but then you want the jobs to be in these two or three job centers in, in, in downtown Seattle, in the east side of Lake Washington. And how's that gonna work? So, and so, what happens in reality is that people live in Thurston County or people live in Skagit County and commute in, right? I mean, I think that's what's really going on to some extent. So, that's on the horizon. This will have to work itself. I don't know the drop dead date on, on Vision 2050, but maybe a hopeful sign. I, I, I hope so. I'll just leave it at that right there. Thanks.
Thank you. I, too, attended the Farmer's Market on Tuesday. And the theme that was throughout the gathering, several people mentioned it to me. This is a happy place. I heard that probably four or five times. And, yeah, just, it, it was really nice to hear that and the comments, you know, people were chatting that didn't know each other. I don't know how many people came up and asked me, where, which booth did you get your flowers from, you know, and so I direct them. But it, it was really, it was a nice event, and the mayor's words were, were nice. The band was great that I listened to. And I must say that I ate enough caramel popcorn to choke ours. Okay. So, Farmer's Market, I will be going to the Developers Forum on Thursday. I'm bringing two guests to that. And I just wonder if anybody else is noticing Lakewood Drive. You know, we have this beautiful street, and on either side of it, it's garbage tossed. Just next time you go, drive by, you can see the cups and... It, it, it looks great, and it's just a shame that there's litter. So, I don't know if we can get a cleanup crew from the, you know, that are sentenced, if they could do that, or if we put together some sort of a volunteer group that just goes and picks it up. I would do it.
Adopt a street.
Adopt a street, whatever. So, anyway, that's it.
Well, very good. The Farmer's Market on Tuesday was a great event. I enjoyed helping cut the ribbon with Chamber of Commerce. They're always there in force, which is nice. Later that evening, I attended the C E L T meeting that we've continued to have and will continue to have for the foreseeable future. Chief Zar was gonna work with Bryn to provide some economic data and census data about our community. They were looking at kind of a... They were looking at kind of a snapshot, who Lakewood is, that kind of a thing on the typical stuff we have on the charts and darts. So if they can work on providing that, I think February, excuse me, June twenty is the next meeting, that they were hopeful to present that kind of information. Coffee with the mayor's tomorrow, I will attend that. Uh, today, I got a quick call from Bryn asking for a comment for a Cairo reporter on council's unanimous resolution with regard to the NTSB recommended fixes, the twenty-six safety recommendations, so they wanted to have a face and a tie on camera, so I did that. So, don't blame me if I look like a goon on, huh, how, how did it come across? Is it all right? All right. I haven't seen it, but I got a text as I was sitting here from somebody who was giving me an appropriate hard time. Um, yeah, exactly. So I'll do coffee with the mayor tomorrow. I think that is Mr. Sharp, or Chief Sharp's presentation about the, uh, the levy. Developers forum, I'll show up on Thursday and provide some opening remarks. Rotary, um, Mary Moss and I went to a Rotary event yesterday, had a chance to chat with some folks about the possibility of doing a Rotary sort of beer garden at the upcoming summer concert series at the pavilion. I said I think that would be a fantastic idea, and when I talked briefly to Ms. Dodsworth, they need to have a sponsoring organization who's willing to do that, so I thought I'd bring that back to say that I got kind of a green light from the Rotary people, if it's something we can help facilitate. I know they have to get the liquor license, and they have to secure the area and all this sort of stuff, so planting the seed now. I know it's July start, I think it's a go, and I think it would actually be an attractive piece to the overall ambiance of the evening, along with the food trucks that I understand will be out there. So if the manager can look at that with Ms. Dodsworth, that would be awesome. Uh, I will be heading out on Friday to the Paris Air Show in Paris, and I represent the Economic Development Board in that capacity, so it's not a city-funded thing, it's a EDB-funded thing. I'll be going to represent the county and, of course, do what I can to raise the, the great flag and seal of the city of Lakewood with regard to all we've got going on out in the Woodbrook Industrial Park and elsewhere. So I will be gone for the next two weeks on that, and, uh, bonjour. I'll see, yeah. There's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned.